All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board Meeting. It is Monday, August 16, 2021. I am calling this meeting to order at 7:01. If you could all rise and say the pledge with me.
Regent to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation, under God, your God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much. I do want to mention before we start, we have two board members that could not come tonight, so they're calling on our bridge line. We have Terri Fisher and Dan Cludier. So we're going to start.
Good evening.
Hi, Dan.
Hello.
So we're going to start with the approval of the June 20, 2021, school board meeting minutes and the retreat. Did everybody have a chance to look? Go ahead, Ellen. I'll need to Google. Which one?
Of both of them. How's that?
Well, we'll do one at a time.
Okay. Of the June 21st.
School Board Minutes.
Institute.
Well, we had the school board meeting, and then we had the retreat.
Yeah, I remember that, but I'm looking at the phone.
Hey, Heather.
Yes, Dan.
I think as an administrative role, we did not recess. We recessed. We didn't close the meeting and start it again.
Yep.
I thought it was one long meeting.
All right, we can do it all as one. Go ahead, Ellen.
Okay. I approve the minutes of June 21, 2021, to include our meeting and the discussion.
And the retreat. Okay, thank you, Ellen.
Second.
Jared, any discussion? All right, seeing none, since we do have people on the phone, I do need to do roll call. So Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terri? Terri? Abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Terri. Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So one abstention, and the rest is passed. Correspondents?
Just a few things for the board this evening. I wanted to again recognize Fahim Ahmed. We were notified that Fahim was selected as the 2021 U.S. Presidential Scholar representing New Hampshire. So one boy and one girl were chosen out of the entire state, and Fahim was chosen to represent the state of New Hampshire, which is really just... I kind of like this. I say many things that are applause-worthy, but there's never anyone here. It's just Mr. Gross usually.
That's a change.
Not that I don't appreciate that. So again, congratulations to Fahim, who is off to Harvard University. And we sent out, the School Boards Association has a number of trainings coming out, and probably most importantly, I wanted the board to be aware, the legislative summary from the School Boards Association has just come out, and my crack research assistant, Mrs. Morin, has been poring through it, as there were a number of things that require policy changes, there were some implications potentially for school handbooks. So all of the new laws from the last legislative session, we are working our way through and making sure that we are compliant with them, or putting a plan in place for policies that need to be revised. So that is something that we're watching closely. There's a lot to it. It's pages and pages and pages. Our representatives in Concord continue to be busy creating a lot of new laws, and we need to respond to them. So we'll do that with diligence, and I know you have public comments.
Always first have commendations.
Okay, I didn't know if you were going to do the correspondence that you received now, or you want to wait until...
Yeah, I'll do that down.
Okay, and that's all I have then.
All right, thanks, Brian. Commendations, good news? Anybody?
Yes. I attended the musical that was done this summer, Into the Woods, and the students did a great job with it, as usual. It was very entertaining. They did a great job. It was a very enjoyable show. And also, in the paper, two of Goffstown's football players, Jeremy and Jarrett Henault, were MVPs in Chad's East-West game, which is a big thing with the guys, and they did very well. There was another young lady, and I don't have, I didn't write it down, maybe you know, Brian, that she won a four-year scholarship, all-inclusive.
The Duke.
Do you, yes, to Duke. Do you remember what her name was?
Melissa Gabadon. She won a four-year full ride to Duke.
Tuition, meals, and boards, international study, domestic summer study, an amazing scholarship for...
It's fantastic.
Yeah.
Incredibly proud of our kids.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else got it, Ellen?
Yeah, and maybe the superintendent will have more details about this in his report, but the Bartlett Group, parent group, administration is planning a celebration for Bartlett on, I think it's Sunday, the 26th of September, from 11:00 to 3:00, in celebration of Bartlett's 100th anniversary of being a school here, okay? And the big thing is, I wanted to ask, is if anybody knows somebody who's gone to school there, you know, forever ago, forever ago, or maybe not that long ago, but I know they'd love to hear from you, so you can contact the school. They have lots of activities planned, so I think it's going to be a nice, nice activity. Nice one. Good bet.
Thank you, Ellen. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, seeing none. So I'm going to close that. We're going to move on to public comment. I see quite a few of you here tonight. I assume most of you have a public comment, so before we go through that, I do want to give you some housekeeping rules. You should have the policy in your hand. When you come up, we'll start from one side of the room, work over, you'll come up to the mic, please say your name and address clearly for the record. You have three minutes to speak. This is not a question-and-answer dialogue. Hopefully, once you hear the presentation, a lot of your questions will be answered. We do ask that you are civil. No obscenities, no nastiness to any of our board or our staff. And then also, I know a lot of people are questioning how to do public comment from now on. Since we are back in person, public comment can be in person, or you can email Denise Morin or a board member, and we'll make sure that it's read during public comment. We won't be doing phone calls anymore in, okay? So once everybody has a chance to talk, I do have some letters that I need to read as well. All right, so if you want to start on this side of the room, we can kind of go over, and everybody can take a turn. Ma'am, do you want to start first?
I'm just here to listen.
Okay, that's fine. Whoever is first over here?
Isn't there a sign-up list? How many are on it?
We can just start from this side of the room and work our way over. Is there somebody that would like to go first to do public comment?
How about Edward? That's me.
Oh, there you go. Is that the list?
That's the list.
Look at that. All right. Thank you.
Edward Mascara, 53, Pine Hill Avenue in Pinnardville. Been a resident of Goffstown since 1993. My son and Jenny's boy went to school together at Bartlett many years ago, part of the '98 Little League team. But I was glad to see you read the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's very important to all of us that we understand that everybody has a choice, and liberty is not for sale. I don't think, to keep the kids separated, I think they should be in school. I think the parents have the choice to determine what their kids need to wear. If it's a mask, let it be their choice. I don't think you can legislate, as a school board, everybody's decision. They attend school to learn, and they're there to be socially and educationally given the opportunity by the teachers and the students and cafeteria and sports. That's how these children learn. I'm a grandfather of two kids, a three-year-old and a five-year-old, and I'm doing it for all the children. And I think that's what makes this country great, is we have the opportunity to come and speak and tell what maybe we haven't done before, which is why there's so many people here today. And I think we're getting more involved in our government and our school board to protect those children, because my two neighbors, I'm watching them grow up, they miss school. They miss their friends. They need to be engaged. They need to see the facial expressions, and they need to breathe and have oxygen, especially in a school that's, it's nice in here tonight, but I imagine there's days when it's very hot, and it's hard for those children to learn. That's my comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So the next on my list, and if your name's not on the list, once I get to the end, if you want to speak, definitely come up, is Naomi Major.
So I'm Naomi Major. I'm a mother. I am speaking on behalf of some of these Gofftown residents for choice behind me. I do appreciate every member of the board, but I am concerned. I am a board-certified medical lab scientist, and despite what you may have heard, not all scientists agree that children should be masked. We know the virus is real, and it has taken a toll on our most vulnerable adults, but we are here to talk about the children. So what do we know about that? First up, July, number one, just this July, there was a study out of the U.K. that showed that serious disease and fatality is very rare among children, even those with comorbidities. Two, per the CDC website, more children died of influenza in 2019 than COVID this entire pandemic. Three, the experts that support child mask mandates are unelected, unaccountable, funded by pharmaceutical companies, and we do demand local governance. A brand-new study out of Brown University, led by Emily Oster, looked at schools in Florida, New York, Massachusetts. She found zero correlation between masking and COVID infection rates in school, none. So why the masks? Our kids are doing fine with this virus. They don't need them. Our adults and staff, they have vaccines now. I believe at this point in the pandemic, any mask mandates are just to provide protection from liability. That's not acceptable. No studies have been conducted on the safety of long-term masking. Is this board prepared to be liable for health issues that are likely to arise? I have a son whose mask anxiety is through the roof. I have an athlete child who gasps for air when she's playing. These are just two of the valid health concerns that parents have. This virus is now endemic. It travels through animal reservoirs. It's here to stay. Viruses mutate. It's normal for viruses to do that. It will continue. Any goal of zero or little community infection is unrealistic, and it has to be abandoned. It's time for the board to embrace evidence-based mitigation efforts to enhance our children's adequate immune systems, such as increased air, movement breaks, meditation, sunlight, fresh water, access to nourishing food. I asked this board to assign a community task force for this purpose, and I'll be the first to volunteer for it. We know you want to keep our children safe, but I assure you, we do know how to do it best, so we ask you, trust the parents and allow for mask choice. Thank you.
So I have a Michael.
That's a tough one.
I'm going to kill your name. I'm so sorry. You can say it when you sit down.
Yes. So my name is Michael Stepanek. I live in 175 Monarch Avenue, Goffstown. I would like to make a case is to, like my predecessors, is to make masks optional for our kids, and to emphasize that it's parents' responsibility for our kids' well-being and to make choices for them, to keep them safe, per our judgment. I don't have a problem if anybody else is willing to wear a mask. That's their choice, and they are free to do so. I would like to supplement some of my predecessors with some data that I have, and this data is available at nh.gov website. And as of today, we had 103,000 persons with COVID-19 from the beginning of the pandemic, out of which I have a breakdown by age. We have 0 to 9, 5,900 cases in 0 to 9; 10 to 11, 12,900; 20 to 29, 20,700; 30 to 39, 15,000, which represents majority of the infections. The death rates for ages 0 to 9 in New Hampshire since the beginning, zero. Death rates 10 to 19, zero. Death rates 20 to 21, 29, one. That's less than 0.1%. 30 to 39, seven cases. 40 to 49, 13 cases. 50 to 59, 36 cases, which still represents 2.6%. As we go further, from 60-plus, that represents over 90% of death rate. There is really no scientific reason to require masks for our kids, basically for preventing them from any fatalities. On another note, to kind of allude to what someone said before me, I grew up in communist Poland, and I came to this country 16 years ago, and I love this country for its freedom and liberties, and I would love to see that still happening, and not forcing any mandates or taking our freedoms and liberties away. Thank you.
So the next two people are from the same house, Brian and Lisa. Did you want to speak together or separately? Are they here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you want to come up?
Probably separately.
Separate, okay. So we do Lisa, Lisa?
Mazur.
Mazur.
Yeah, I live in Goffstown.
Yes, hi. Thank you.
Actually, a brand-new U.S. citizen as of January.
Oh, congratulations.
So starting to get involved. So, yes, I love what you said. Some of the stats that he read off are similar. Thank you for hearing us tonight. There are 1.4 million people that live in New Hampshire, and there are only 58 hospitalizations in the entire state right now, and all of them are 70 or older. So there, as was mentioned, there's no deaths in children 0 to 19. There hasn't been. There's no one in the ICU right now. So 58 in the hospital of 1.4 million does not warrant the mask to continue. We can't keep this up. We know we're dealing with a virus that has an infection-fatality rate of 0.05 in person 70 years old and under. A recent Department of Infectious Diseases publication stated that face masks become non-consequential and do not function after 20 minutes due to saturation. Remember, even Dr. Fauci told us in 2020 that masks are not needed and not as effective as you may think against this virus. Dr. Fauci was indeed telling you the science then, and the science has not changed. Why is it the science now allows thousands of people, including children, to pack together mask-free in sports stadiums, but classrooms are somehow different? During April to October 2020, emergency room visits linked to mental health problems for children aged 5 through 11 increased by nearly 25%, and increased by 31% for those aged 12 to 17 years old, as compared to the same period in 2019. This will continue to rise if we keep this up. This really is not an issue of the science, as kids do not spread the virus readily to other kids, adults, teachers, or to the home. Most do not get severely ill or die from this. Moreover, teachers are also at very low risk of severe illness or death, and the school setting remains one of the safest, lowest-risk environments. To close, masking children is as absurd, illogical, nonsensical, and potentially dangerous trying to prevent every case of COVID or stopping COVID at all costs. Masks are not needed for children based on Nero's zero risk in children. The risk of dying from COVID, almost zero for young people. The issue of masks in children is really a risk-management question for parents, and it should be their choice only, not yours and not the government's. Sorry. Thank you for hearing us.
We have now Brian.
I have props.
Oh, wow.
I had no part in this.
That's why she didn't want to go up with him.
That's true. That's very true. I didn't call this was happening. I like to see beers, too. I'm not a minority, which is great. Let me get settled here. I'm getting old, too, so. All right. So my name is Brian Mazur, 39 Shirley Park Road, just across the street, and I'm glad to be here, and thank you for your time to listen to all of us behind us and myself. First disclaimer, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a technologist, but I understand and can read biology, both in high school and college. And what I mean by that is, well, what I'm going to say and share with you, I have a lot of references I can share with you guys, just in case you guys want to know about the facts I'm going to share with you in a second. So in all my research, and it hasn't been an exhaustive research, but I've spent a lot of time, the COVID-19 virus particle, if you guys have researched it, it comes in at .125 micron, very small, very, very small, right? If you look at masks and what the CDC recommends, they recommend primarily the N95 mask, which, if you guys know, 95 means 95%, at least 95% of blocking of the virus, but what they don't say clearly is that this is only good for .3 micron. So if the virus is two and a half times smaller, how is this helping anyone, especially kids? And another thing, too, if they're not wearing it properly, you see a lot of people wearing it incorrectly and not with a tight seal. This is basically almost useless. If you go even further, if you look at the surgical masks, they're even worse. They're very porous. If you really wanted to say, to block out the virus, you should have everyone wear something like this, which no one's going to do. It's a one-way respirator, creates a tight seal, and it'll kill out any kind of virus, or not kill out, it'll block out any kind of virus or any kind of aerosol or anything, basically, but no one's going to wear this, and that's why they didn't recommend it. So I just want to share, kind of food for thought, is that recommendations of masks, I personally think, has been a lie. I think early on, everyone's afraid, but what the science is telling me is very clear, if you have a very small virus, that's much smaller than this, and what they're recommending, and everyone's recommending, how is it helpful to anyone? Now, I'm not judging if someone wants to wear it and say it helps them. That's great. But again, going back to the whole subject about masks, it should be a choice. If someone thinks this really helps them, or helps someone else, they can wear it, but the science clearly says it does not help, because it's much smaller than what they're recommended. And so, just a food for thought, and I would just, since Lisa and I don't have any kids, I would say strongly listen to the parents. I know a lot of parents and kids do not want to wear a mask. For some of the people that are mentioning, they want to be in classroom without a mask, be able to socialize, and to really learn on the fundamentals, which is, you know, history and biology and, not calculus, but maybe calculus later on, but early on, math.
Yes, calculus.
Well, yeah, eventually. You've got to start somewhere. But to learn the fundamentals and to be really equipped to hit society, and the parents will actually guide the child in regards to all things in life. And so I just want to say, thank you again for hearing me out. It was kind of a little ramble, but again, I'll be happy to support you, the science I've looked at. Again, I'm a simple guy, and if I read the science, I don't know how these help at all, and no one's going to wear this, which is a one-way respirator. I mean, you can, but I guarantee no student's going to wear this, and even an adult's not going to wear this outside of the home or in public. So thanks for your time, and I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, Brian. So is there anyone who would like to speak that is not on the list? I've got them listed, but absolutely, yes, may.
And thank you, folks here about the masks. I appreciate it. I'm a parent of four kids, three are autistic, and they are struggling with this right now. One of them wants a hazmat suit, so when you ask the question about would someone wear it, my son would wear that. It's not good for him, though. It's not good for him mentally. It's not good for his mental health.
So you learned here through the beginning, so just state your name and address.
Sure. So Catherine Shea, from 29 Tamar Drive, Goffstown, parent of four, all in Goffstown District. I'm here for something that's a little bit different. So I support all the arguments I just heard so far from the folks about masks, and I think they've covered all the angles on it really well, so great job, guys. I'm here to talk about contingency plans. So we all just went through, and by the way, it's really nice to see all your faces here in person, we all just went through hell the last, you know, 14, 18 months, right? I think we can all agree to that. We don't know what the future's going to bring, right? We don't know how this is going to go, but what we do know is that there are some alternatives out there to consider. By that, I wanted to, and I don't have a fancy presentation or anything, but I'm certainly happy to send you some information on it, but our Department of Education, while all this has been happening, has been exploring other options for families and for schools. On the way here, I heard on NPR, there's a bus shortage or driver shortage everywhere, right? There's teacher shortages. There's all kinds of shortages now. You go to the grocery store, and they're missing things off the shelves, right? So what I wanted to talk to you guys about, and to ask you to look into a little more about, is something called a Prenda Learning Pod. What is that? It's a micro-school, essentially. And I think we've come to the point where we don't know what this future's going to bring, but what we do know is if we have to go through the last 14 months over again, some of us probably will not be here, and that sounds really negative, but it's that stressful, I'm sure as we all can agree, right? What these pods are, is any New Hampshire district can apply for the Recovering Bright Futures Grant to open tuition-free district learning pods. What they are, is they take place in normal school buildings, but they're in smaller group numbers, you know, so like under 10 students in a pod. Pod sounds kind of weird, I agree. But what it is, is it's a micro-school. There's a grant, and the school applies, or the district applies for the grant, and based on interest, folks can sign up to be in one of these community-based pots. It's essentially helping ourselves, right? It's doing some of the things that we thought, wow, like, that would be really good if we could self-organize. It's doing the, it takes the village. It's doing the community-based organizing, and it's tapping into the fact that we may all be back home, right? So what these pods are, is there's two different approaches. There's a district one, and the school district retains the funding, the adequacy funding for the student, and then there's one where the And then there's one where the community does it for themselves. In absence of a district one, I guarantee you, having attended the event on this, there is going to be a huge number of community pods popping up. And that's not to say it's a bad thing or a good thing. It's just to say people, you can see, have all different opinions on how we should handle this. Should we be home? Should we be masked? Should we be not masked? But what we do know is we can't lose any more learning for these kids, right? We can't lose more teachers. We can't lose more bus drivers. We can't. So, in absence of a major solution out there, this is a great idea. It's off of the New Hampshire DOE webpage. You can get to it through that or prenda newhampshire.com, I believe. Happy to leave this information for you guys, but the district is, it's really a win-win for them. They get to keep the kids here. The kids continue to learn. It's using the standards that are the same as the district. They go through testing that's the same. You can have community-based guides. And you retain your employees. You retain your kids. You retain your adequacy. You don't see a mass exodus. What number two is going to precipitate is a mass exodus. I can tell you that right now. That's a community-based pod, and that will be where people send in their letters of intent to homeschool. They self-organize, and then they lead a pod. So, I just wanted to leave you guys with some food for thought. It is not unattainable. This is not something difficult to put together. I certainly would have loved to come in here tonight with a plan to say, here's the plan, how you do it, how you execute it. I do planning for a job. That's my career, in software engineering. This is not that hard. This is something that's really doable. It's a win-win for the district. You'll keep your kids. You'll keep your teachers. We'll keep our sanity, and we'll keep our health. And we don't have to argue about masks. So, I will send this to the superintendent for consideration. There is a list of parents that's growing that would like to have Apprendre Pod, and I do think in absence of it being sanctioned officially, you're going to see it's popping up in Londonary. It's in Boe. It's in Dunbarton. It's all over the place. And as soon as the panic sets in, if there are infections, you will see a huge departure. So, I would just encourage the board to plan ahead for that. It's inevitable. It may happen. We hate to see that happen with COVID, but we've got these variants, shortages. You put it together. We need a contingency plan. This is a good plan. So, it is, sorry. And I didn't bring the name. It's, it's like Prenda New Hampshire. Yeah, prendaschool.com. And then if you go to the DOE site, you'll see you can easily apply for an application. It goes back to the DOE. They are approving their grants, and their applications very fast these days. They know time is of the essence. So, if we want to get in on this, we need to jump on it.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. So, has everybody that's here spoken that wanted to speak? I do ask that, I see you have papers in your hands. If you could email them to Denise Morin. Denise Morin at SAU19.org, so she can put it in the minutes or hand it to me when you leave, so we can give that to Denise. So, we're not done with public comment. I do have a few letters that I received through the last few days that people asked for me to read. One is a thank you to our school board. A teacher that retired this past year sent me a letter, a card, and wanted me to share with all of you guys. So, it says, "Dear School Board Members, I want to thank you all for the bell that was presented to me at my retirement party on June 15, 2021. It will hold a special place in my heart as a remembrance of my 33-year career as a teacher in the Goffstown School District. As a teacher, as well as a community member here in Goffstown, I have always been proud of the meaningful work that we do in the schools of Goffstown. I also want to thank you for all your work in providing leadership for what I think is one of the most important parts of our community, the future of our children. With sincere thanks, Barbara French." So, that was very nice. She retired this past year. So, the first letter that I have is from Matthew and Elizabeth Crowe. This is a family from New Boston, but they have a child that graduated high school here and two on the way, and they did ask that I read this. "This is Matthew and Elizabeth Crowe, 40 Papal Road, New Boston. Our oldest son is a Goffstown High alumni, and our two boys will be there soon. We're writing in to request the school board make a motion tonight and then vote tonight to not mandate or require the masking of children and staff at New Boston Central School for the 2021-2022 school year. Should parents still wish to send their child to school masked, that should be their prerogative. But after eight-plus months of vaccine availability and after all the education the public has had about COVID-19 and its variants, including the more contagious but less dangerous, like all virus mutations, Delta variant masking the students is scientifically unnecessary and scientifically proven to be detrimental to their well-being. Teachers, administration, and staff have had months to be vaccinated, and they also should have a choice to wear a mask or not. There are older studies and studies as recent as two weeks ago that show school settings are not shown to be transforming COVID or its variants to anyone, nor is there any available data showing negative efforts or negative effects on otherwise healthy children. Should the board vote to make masking a requirement, we and many other parents we know will be looking into utilizing the state's new education freedom account to our advantage and work towards moving our two children out of the SAU19 and to a private institution that does not forcibly mask the students or neighboring public school that is pro-mask choice. In short, we support mask choice, not mask mandating. Our child's body, our choice. Our tax dollars, our choice." So, the second letter is from Kristen and Jason Richard. "I am writing to state our parent feedback on masks in school. We are parents of a second-grade student. We feel strongly that masks should be required for elementary schools. While I understand the viewpoints on both sides for wearing or not wearing a mask in school, as a parent of a child who cannot be vaccinated at this time due to his age, vaccines not available under age 12 yet, I feel strongly that elementary schools should have masks required until students can get vaccinated. We are talking just a few months, not the entire year. If this cannot be enforced, then a remote option should be provided until vaccination. Our family does not eat out or bring our son anywhere where there is an outdoor setting or an indoor setting or large population. Sending him to school with no distancing and optional mask does not align with our standard of care for him during this interim period where he cannot be vaccinated. Once vaccinated, he will be in traditional school. If the district and school board do not allow other options, remote or mask required, we will likely need to have him utilize Velax until he is vaccinated, and then he would return to school." The next letter is from Andrea Devonza. "I wanted to write in this evening to express some concerns I have about the upcoming school year. My daughter was fully remote last year and had an amazing year. She excelled both academically and within her confidence due to her teacher. She is now fully vaccinated. However, I still have some reservations about sending her back in a couple of weeks, and honestly, I am not very comfortable with it. Many people in town have expressed their opinion against mask mandates. Both the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics have released statements that all staff and students should be masked indoors regardless of vaccination status. I'm afraid that the board will feel pressured into not mandating masks and put students and faculty in jeopardy. Hillsborough County is considered a high-transmission-rate county, and the amount of children getting infected and being hospitalized around the country is going in the wrong direction. When discussing and voting tonight, please consider offering remote or hybrid options for children and requiring the use of masks to help protect our community members." We have another one from Lauren Dukas. "I regret I will not be able to attend tonight's school board meeting, so I'd like to make a statement for the board's consideration, if you please. My name is Lauren Dukas, and I am a member of Goffstown's Budget Committee and the B.C. Representative to the School Board Subcommittee for Facilities Planning. I am not speaking as a representative of either committee, but as a Goffstown resident and parent of four. I wish to record my support for our school board, particularly during these tremendous times. In light of the current spread of the Delta variant of the COVID-19 virus and considering that our county is now classified as having substantial transmission, I would voice my support of mask mandates in all K-12 setting, as is the current CDC recommendation. We saw last school year that masks themselves were not an impediment to education, and students largely remain flexible with their requirements. Even my preschooler and first grader were able to learn phonics and reading skills using masks. There is ample precedent for setting a mask requirement, as that is the federal mandate in all transit situations, including school buses, as well as the longstanding dress codes our schools enforce. Our main goal should be to keep schools safe and in-person, and masks gives us the best chance of success. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, for your time." We're almost done. This one is from Becky LaForge.
I'm here if you want me to read.
Oh, you're here?
I'm here.
Sure. Would you like to read your letter?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Careful of the cord.
Yeah, don't trip.
Safety first, everybody.
Thank you all very much for listening to us. "My name is Becky LaForge. I live on, live on 18A Landmark Lane here in Goffstown. Thank you for taking the time to read what I have to offer as a parent of three children in the school district. My, my oldest child graduated from Goffstown High School in June, and I have been a part of the Goffstown School District as a parent for 12 years. This will be my 13th year, and I appreciate and value the education that my children continue to receive and have received thus far. COVID-19 has changed the complexion of how we live, and the impact on our children emotionally and otherwise is both daunting and exhausting on many levels. I am deeply concerned about their emotional well-being long-term. For example, a young child should not have to struggle with phonics and literacy because they cannot see the mouth of their teacher hidden by a mask. A shy little first grader does not have the ability to self-advocate to emphasize their struggle. So many children have fallen behind considerably academically. Our youngest son is living proof of that. He is going into the 7th grade at Mountain View Middle School and has taken a huge hit. He is asthmatic, has sensory issues, and wears glasses, and having a, and having to wear a mask is extremely overwhelming for him. He has terrible anxiety from it. He is shy and sometimes socially awkward, and being in middle school without the elements of COVID is hard enough. We pulled our son from in-person learning almost immediately last fall, and he went full remote for 6th grade and struggled more than words can adequately describe. It was disaster, it was a disastrous, ineffective model for our son, and he fell through the, through the cracks. I am by no means blaming his remote teacher, because she was wonderful. I blame the poor design of what was implemented for the kids that were already struggling. It was not a one-size-fits-all solution for all kids, but we were not given any other options. My husband and I see this disastrous trend on the horizon again for 7th grade for our child, because the freedom of choice in masking or not seems to be falling by the wayside. Parents should have the right to choose if their children wear a mask or not. Vaccinated children 12, 12 and older should not be forced to wear a mask. Adults have been given every opportunity to get the vaccine if they are fearful of the risks. Children should not have to suffer on this account. Please consider making masking a choice made solely by the parents so that kids like mine don't continue to struggle tremendously emotionally and academically. We, the people, should have the right to choose what is best for our own children. Thank you very much."
So, I have one more letter to read from Jennifer, actually Jennifer Berrier. "Dear members of the school board, thank you for serving our community's youngest members. I am not able to attend the meeting tonight in person, but love to express preference for the 2021-2022 school year safety measures. I share our community's wish for full school experience this year, five days a week, of instruction and connection with our educators. My children are seven and 10, one in elementary school and one headed to middle school. Both are too young to receive the COVID vaccine at this time. My hope for them this year is to have a more consistent educational experience. I am so grateful to their teachers and the administrators at Maple Ave for putting in so much effort to make a tough situation manageable. That said, having only two to three days of instruction and connection with students and teachers was a challenge. They did better when we went to five days of instruction for the remaining quarter of the year, though the stress of pivoting from one model to another had its own challenges. It seems this year we have a new set of challenges with the Delta variant and its increase in transmission, especially among children and the unvaccinated. I think it would be really great if the district could put a consistent, trauma-informed school year of five days instruction as a primary goal for this year. My children were lucky in so many respects, but I acknowledge that many struggle emotionally, behaviorally, and academically in this last year. Goffstown schools did an incredible job remaining in-person with their hybrid model when many other districts needed to pivot to remote. This was important to our students and also to parents from whom sudden changes in childcare and schedule would impact. It wasn't a perfect year, with almost all schools in Goffstown having clusters at one point or another, and individual needs to pivot to remote. This was with masks. I am really concerned how often we will be asked by NHD, HHS, to pivot to remote from outbreaks if we take away the one thing that experts have said will prevent the spread of the virus. Jobs this year are not offering the same leniency towards professionals who suddenly need to work remotely or take time when a member of their family or multiple members contracts the virus. I would ask our schools equipped to show its staff the same leniency this year if a teacher, para, or support staff member has to take off two weeks for a sick child, or maybe even four weeks if they have multiple children. I hear the term "parent choice" in other districts regarding their mask policy. It is important to note that there really isn't a choice due to the function of the mask as a way to stop the spread of the virus, not the exposure to the virus. Masks do provide a small level of protection for the wearer, but their main purpose is to keep infected people from spreading the virus into the air. I completely understand and appreciate that we are all sick of wearing masks. As a teacher myself, in a hot classroom, it isn't very comfortable. I appreciate the teachers' need to take extra time for outdoor mask breaks and encourage more access, access to water to prevent kids from getting headaches or dehydrated. That said, they are still the only means we have to stop the spread of the virus. The CDC recommends that in areas with transmission, such as Goffstown's current rate, that people, regardless of vaccine status, wear masks indoor. If the parent choice is to not wear a mask or to not be exposed to the virus, this is a no-win scenario. There is a, there is no choice if my children are in a classroom in which others are not wearing a mask that takes away their choice to not be exposed. If we mandate masks to make sure that our most vulnerable population, the unvaccinated, are not exposed, we take away our parents' choice to mask their child. We must also keep in mind our higher-risk students or unvaccinated staff with asthma, compromised immune systems, or other core mobilities. My hope is that during this school year, we see an end to all of this. We just need to hang on a little longer. I truly believe that. But we are seeing from schools down south that have started in the last couple of weeks that many are already having to pivot to remote learning or change their five-day in-person models. After a year that was traumatizing for many students, we should do all that we can to keep these students in school five days a week this year. At this point, absence of vaccines for our elementary schoolers and half of the middle schoolers, that is simply left to wearing while indoors. Our primary focus of this year must be our students and seeing that they are able to attend school five days a week for the academic and social-emotional remedication needed after the 2019, 20, and 2021 school years. Thank you for taking the time to read this email." So, that is all the letters I received. Before I close, public comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Go ahead, sir.
Hello. Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Dan Baker, 30 Shirley Park Road. I have five children. All of them will be in the school system this year. And I don't know if any of you noticed, but a clear delineation was popping up here in the two sides, if you will, arguments. You had the one side who I thought did a very good job of laying out some real facts... You had the one side who I thought did a very good job of laying out some real facts, some real data. We didn't get a time to check their sources. I'll grant you that, but I've looked at a lot of the same data. It's solid. I'm going with it. You've got the other side where it was circular arguments with anecdotal evidence and all on the bedrock of the CDC. You know, and that's the CDC. It's not their job to decide what the kids of Goffstown do or do not do. That's not their job. And at the end of the day, sometimes it's hard to understand who makes brave choices in hard times, but this one is going to be real clear, real quick to all of us. I can guarantee you that. And don't be fooling yourselves if you think the brave choice is to follow the CDC, who has these vast, crazy guidelines for the country when we don't reflect most of the country here. And you're looking at a reflection. We didn't write emails and send them in. We showed up. And trust me, there's a lot more folks who will show up, or maybe they won't, to school, that is, because there are choices. We took our kids out last year. We're putting them back in this year. We're going to give it a shot again, but it's a real, real, real thin ice situation. So we'll see very clearly very soon who's making brave decisions, and that's all I have to say.
So anyone else before I close public comment and we get into our presentation? No? All right. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight and talking to us with your concerns and your thoughts and all the people that did write in. We really appreciate hearing from all of you, so thank you so much. So I will close public comment, and it is now Superintendent Brian Bolton to do the presentation.
Okay. That was very spirited. Thank you all. The document that I'm going to walk everyone through right now is posted on our website. So anyone listening to this broadcast, Mr. Cludier or Mr. Fisher, if you're so inclined, you can go to the website and front and center, this document should be posted. So anyone can follow along, but I'll try to read as much of this as I go through it. So let me start. This is a similar approach to what we took last year. Last year, actually, third school year. The first year in 2020, we wrote an emergency operations plan, and we connected it to policy EBCF, which is pandemic and epidemic emergencies. So what I'd like to start with are a few guiding beliefs. As we were working on this plan, these beliefs were prominent, and I think will align a lot of what we've heard. Safety is our top priority, but we also need to have kids in school. So balancing those two elements is of critical importance, and we strive to balance personal responsibility and personal choice with the greater collective healthcare needs of our educational community. That's critically important, and it largely impacted the approach that I took with this plan. I'd like the 2021-2022 school year to look as normal as possible, and I'm committed to 100% full in-person learning for the entire school year. I've heard a number of references to if we had to go remote. I have to be very direct and painfully honest with the community. I don't see that happening. I just don't. We managed. We were open all of last year. We had three outbreaks that occurred. We had two short shutdowns that we did at Glen Lake and at Bartlett. We were able to remain open from Thanksgiving through the New Year, which I think almost every surrounding school district closed and went fully remote. I'm committed to kids being in school. We have learning that needs to happen. We have kids that have lost ground. I don't know if any of you watched the very comprehensive data presentation that we did, but we've seen learning loss, particularly in the area of mathematics in kids. Kids need to be in school. Mitigation measures are intended to reduce, not eliminate, risk. There is no elimination of risk. So this is something that throughout last year when we were open, I heard a number of school districts that talked about that they had a couple of COVID cases. We had hundreds, and we stayed open. We didn't shut down, and we're committed to doing that same thing again. So a layered approach. You're going to see a number of COVID mitigation recommendations. Masking is one of them. There are many others. We will continue to monitor at a hyper-local level, looking at community transmission, school transmission, available immunization rates, screening and testing, using targeting testing. You'll hear more about that. And this plan represents our thinking based on current guidance and data. It may need to be changed or may need to evolve. So let me get into the plan. This is about six pages, board members, so it probably might take 20 minutes or so to go through, maybe longer. If anyone has questions, if you want to ask while we're going, that probably makes the most sense while the topic is at hand. So I start with logistics. Communication plan. SAU-19 will continue to use a centralized and decentralized communications approach with information sent out from the SAU as well as individual schools. I think people are familiar with the approach that we take, that I serve as kind of the spokesman on a lot of issues, but then there are school-specific things that the principal communicates. That will continue. Communication methodologies will continue to focus on the use of video, email, text, voice messages, websites, social media, et cetera. Schools will continue to notify the school community of positive cases, as we did last year, during the hundreds of cases that we had. SAU-19 will continue to publish our own COVID numbers on the website. The numbers that people see on state websites are wrong. That's why we published our own COVID data all of last year. The numbers, if you would have looked at the state's school dashboard, were painfully wrong, painfully wrong. So don't go there. Go to our data and look at our numbers, because they will be accurate and they'll be correct. Expectations for students and staff will be communicated, and we'll have a new section that we add to the website that will focus on our current mask status. Food services. Physical distancing greater than three feet when possible would be maximized during snack or mealtimes. From a logistical perspective, I again want to just emphasize to the school board that lunches, breakfast, these are our most challenging times to cover. So there's an awful lot that goes into all of this. Nothing is simple. You start to uncover these things, and there are many other layers that impact them. So we will continue to work with our food service director, who has done a great job looking at additional spaces to promote distancing during mealtimes when needed. And I do want to be clear that staff working in food production are often unable to physically distance and may need to wear masks. The Nutrislice platform, which is an online ordering system, will be still used at some schools, but other schools will allow kids to go through the traditional hot lunch line. The USDA free meals program is going to continue throughout the next school year, so I want the board to know. You'll recall how much time and effort went into feeding all of our kids last year, including the meals for kids at home, meals for kids that live in the community but don't attend school. We provided thousands and thousands of meals to the community last year, and that will continue this year as well. Facilities use of school buildings and grounds. I am recommending that we reinstitute access to policy KF, which will allow requests to be submitted to the administration to allow people to access our buildings and our fields. That was something we had suspended last year. Transportation. The national, state, and local bus driver shortage continues to impact our ability to provide busing services to students. I'm not going to ask Mr. Gross to speak to this right now, but we have significant concerns about our ability to run all of our buses. We are short drivers. If anyone's interested in being a school bus driver, they pay you to be trained, and you want to help your community, we could really use it. At this point, I am continuing to encourage parents to drive their kids to and from school this year, if they're able to, in order to bring down the total number of students that need to ride on school buses. We are looking right now. Scott, do you want to give just a brief look of how many runs we're looking like we're short for Goffstown?
Sure. We ordinarily run between 22 and 23 bus routes in Goffstown, and we are looking at around 17 or 18 bus runs right now. So we have to consolidate at least five or six bus runs. We did that last year as well. I didn't pose to that to quite that extent. I knew that they were consolidating routes, but not five or six. We are in no better shape now than where we were. They've got three or four new drivers in the queue, but it is a perilous situation with the bus driving situation. There will be no Mountain View Middle School co-curricular transportation because there's not enough bus drivers. So we hope to have no issues with high school co-curricular, like athletic-type transportation, but it is day-to-day. If a bus driver is sick or decides to leave the ranks, that means another route has to get consolidated. If it gets too bad, we're starting thinking about a depot type of approach, where kids go to a certain area and they get picked up. So that's not just, that's regular ed. Special education is not a whole lot better, but it's a bad thing. So we're looking, like for kindergarten, for example, we're going to use special ed buses to work in partnership with regular ed buses to pick up kids, because we have no choice, like for kindergarten, for kindergarten. So we're cobbling it together. Again, anybody in the community, if you can drive a bus, I beg you, I beg you, I beg you, please consider doing this, and you will get paid for the training. And if you're talking about doing something good for your community, desperately need drivers.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, Scott. Hang on one second, Brian. Alan, can I have your hand?
Yes. If parents decide that they will transport their child to and from every day, who do they notify so that, and by when, so that the planning rooms and pickup and drop-offs can be?
We've got that going up.
Okay.
Yep, we're on top of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Alan.
So continuing down to D3, masks are required on school buses at all times. This one's not me, folks. So anyone who disagrees with this, I would send you to Washington.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
Says per CDC. It's my understanding that the CDC is not an authoritative source, other than points of entry into the United States in interstate travel. They have no authority for intrastate travel. So why are we putting per CDC when it's really, they have no authority to tell us what to do?
Yeah, Jared, this is one that has been directed to school districts, that school districts are required to have masks on buses per this CDC transportation order. And anyone who wants to research this, wants to take it up with the Attorney Generals, wherever you'd like to go, this is not a local mandate. So this is consistent with the mandate that requires masks on airplanes, trains, et cetera.
Yeah, that's interstate travel, which of course they have the authority to.
Jared, I have no answer to you.
So my question is, is what legal opinion do we have to say per CDC that we have to follow their guidelines for travel on the bus?
We were told by Dr. Chan last week, who's the state epidemiologist.
Okay, so that's a legal opinion?
If the school board would like to take action on this, let me know what you'd like to do, if you'd like to get a legal opinion on whether or not the feds can do this. I have heard that there are legal challenges to this. I think that there's probably some merit to that, but this one I'm not debating. This one is being imposed on me. We're being told this is what we're required to do, and if I don't follow this, I'm not prepared to do that. We're being directed to have masks on school buses. In terms of CDC's authority to do this, I really can't speak to that, Jared. It's outside my knowledge base. And this is one that I think is really, I'm not spending any time on this, because unless I'm directed by the board, if you would like me to do something with this, let me know what you'd like me to do. But as far as I'm concerned, this would be one to take up with the Department of Ed in New Hampshire. Maybe the commissioner would like to weigh in on this, but this is one that we have been told we're required to follow.
So is this not per CDC? If I may follow?
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So this is not per CDC, this is per New Hampshire, whatever the individual is?
No, this is per CDC. This information has been shared with us from the state.
So the state's giving us this information?
From the CDC.
I'd like to have a legal opinion, so I'd like to make a motion that we actually get a legal opinion to say it. We have to follow the CDC guidelines for intrastate travel.
I'll second that.
All right, Alan. I see discussions. Scott, go ahead.
Just for perspective, I just advised you in terms of the extreme driver shortage, I will share with you that I have had conversations with the bus companies regarding this document, and the feedback that I got from both bus companies was that if there were no masks, it also could then reduce the number of drivers as well, potentially.
Or increase.
So I just wanted to let you know that that is anecdotal. There is no official survey. That is just a.
All right. Before we go any further, I'm going to ask that the public stay quiet, please. We're allowing you to be here. You've had your chance to talk, but this is now the board's time, so if you could just please not shout out any questions and answers, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Dan, go ahead.
Even though, you know, my feelings on how the feds, so I support Jared's inquiry, but unfortunately, because I am an individual with a compromised immune system, I would think that the school bus would be logical because the kids are sitting arm to arm and shoulder to shoulder, but once you get off the bus, we'll talk about that. That's completely different. So that's just my thought for the moment.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, from a comment perspective, Scott, I understand what you're saying, and if we're saying that this is to promote a safe work environment that the school bus wants to do, if this was per school bus contract or school bus negotiation, I would understand that, and I would not be making this motion, but this is a CDC, which, again, it's saying per CDC, which we're saying that's the authority that's telling us to do this, and that's why I have a problem with this. If it was per school bus contract or school bus negotiations, different story for me.
Go ahead, Alan. Thank you, Jared.
I would, I support getting legal opinion on this, just for our liability, and I truly understand the superintendent's perspective of this recommendation, okay? As a board, though, we can make a different decision if we choose to. I would like to get that feedback as quickly as possible, but so, I don't know if we're meeting before schools start, again, the timeframe is lost in my head, but I'd like to see us at this point in time, after we vote on Jared's motion, that we plan on starting school with making bus masks optional and change that if the legal opinion comes back different.
Anybody else want to weigh in? We have a motion. We have a second. All right, then I will do roll call. Jenny?
So what exactly is the motion that we're voting on?
To get legal.
If we have Ms. Moore, state what it is, but.
Just to get legal opinion on the, we have a form.
Okay, yes.
Superintendent, yes. Jenny, you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Thank you, Terry. Alan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
And Heather? Yes. So we're unanimous, and it passes.
Could I like to make another motion?
Our next board meeting is August 30th, so.
That's too late.
We have some more.
So I'd like to make another motion, if I may?
For what?
I'd like to move that until we get that feedback from legal counsel, that we make bus transportation masks optional.
Well, why don't we go through this whole thing, and then we can figure out what we're going to decide at the end. We're looking for legal option. Let's hold off on making any more motions at this time of what we are or are not going to do. Is everybody good with that? So go ahead, Brian.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Are we tangling that motion? She made a motion? She did make a motion.
It hasn't been seconded. I just don't think we can make that decision on 30th. It's too late. I think the decision needs to be made tonight.
We're going to make a decision tonight, but I don't want to go each line and make motions to what we're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to hear the whole presentation.
Okay.
So if you can take back that motion, or if I have a second, then we can take. I have a second, then we can table it.
I'll rescind the motion. I'll rescind the motion. For now.
For now, that's fine. All right, Brian, go ahead.
Okay, continuing on. Mr. Gross, as a follow-up item, can you please make that inquiry with Goffstown's attorney tomorrow?
Sure.
School access by visitors. Non-essential school visitors will be limited. Schools will continue to operate under a modified secure campus status where visitors are restricted. Video conferencing will continue to be utilized for parent meetings as appropriate. COVID, school-based reopening teams will review and operationalize this plan. The board will recall last year that we wrote an SAU framework and then each school had a team that worked together on the logistics of how to implement this plan. That same approach will be taken this year. COVID mitigation. Stay home when sick or potentially exposed. Students or staff who have symptoms of illness such as influenza or COVID-19 should stay home and be tested. We saw an example, I can't remember the state, but a kid who had tested positive went to school and was exposed to 80 children. Parents knew the kid was positive.
That's cool.
All students and staff will receive the current COVID-19 symptom list to self-monitor and self-screen on a daily basis. Students or staff presenting with symptoms will be isolated, masked, and required to quarantine or be tested. So the quarantine, I'll get into this a little bit later, but it looks very different than last year.
Oh, sorry, Janelle. Go ahead.
I just have a, kind of a follow-up question about the tests that we were promised last year for, for the schools.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about testing, Janelle, but just to refresh everyone's memory, the tests, superintendents were told last year that the state had received 400,000 rapid tests and that schools were going to have access to those. That never happened. The good news is, is we do now. So we're going to talk a little bit. Part of my recommendation this evening is to implement a screening and targeted testing program that's available to us from the state this year, which is new. Anything else on that, Janelle?
I'll, I'll be looking forward to hearing that.
The New Hampshire Department of Public Health recommendation continues, and this is quote, "Continue to have a low bar for excluding and testing people with new signs or symptoms of the virus." So we are continuing to be recommended if kids come down and they have COVID symptoms. This is what our nurses are being recommended by the Department of Public Health. So let me talk about masks. And what I'm recommending is a targeted mask model to be used. So let me talk about what I mean by that. Targeted mask decisions will be made for unique school-specific case data and will be made based on a number of cohorts or configurations such as buses, classroom, grade level, et cetera. Targeted masking decisions will be made based on local data and evidence of school-based transmission. The recommendation to start the school year is to have masks be optional with the exception of school buses, which is required per CDC, as I previously stated. Masks are no longer recommended outdoors by CDC and the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. So we have made that change. That actually happened right before the end of last school year. Masking should be viewed on a continuum from optional to targeted to universal and may be differentiated by and possibly within schools. And as people are wrapping their heads around what I'm saying to you, I want people to not think about masks being implemented in a binary model where masks are either required or they are not. Yes or no. Masks, no masks. What I'm recommended, recommending is that as we start to see cases happen, that we may choose to use targeted masking if we have kids that are exposed in a classroom. It could be, it could be a co-curricular group, performing arts, it could be any number of things. But masking is something that can and should be a tool. But in general, I support parents' choice. I support personal responsibility. I'm sitting here in front of you. I'm choosing not to wear a mask, but that's my choice. I'm vaccinated. That too is my choice. And I'm trying to give parents a choice and to also understand it is not a binary choice. And this is something that's different for people to wrap their heads around. It's not, we wear masks all the time or we never wear masks. Last year, we had kids wear masks all the time because that was what we were recommended to do. We didn't have our first case of COVID until the end of October. Did we have COVID in the schools? I don't know. I can't say for sure, but I know that for two months, we required masks and we didn't have any cases present. So I'm looking at this differently. So instead of looking at a mitigation measure of blanket universal masking that I want to use masking if we need to in targeted circumstances based on school-based spread, seems kind of logical to me. Superintendent is authorized to change or alter mask expectations and will report to the board. This has been stated in some of the letters we received. The CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics are both recommending universal rap mask wearing in all K through 12 schools. When I look at the data and I go to Johns Hopkins website and look at the data every single day, it looks pretty different to me when I look at Florida compared to Vermont. I'm hesitant to take national recommendations that make a blanket statement that everyone should be wearing masks all the time. I think live free or die, we should have more specificity. We should have more targeted approaches based on actual cases and if we see the virus spreading. If we don't, then we carry on. If we see cases and we have a cluster, last year, we had three clusters. A cluster is defined as three or more cases that are related. An outbreak is multiple unrelated clusters. We never had an outbreak, but we had three clusters. One was at Glen Lake, one was at Bartlett, and one was here at the high school on a sports team. We responded to each of them differently, and I'm suggesting that we need to take a different approach and not think about masks all the time or masks none of the time. Because there are times if we have positive cases or spread where it is another mitigation factor. So again, recommendations for Florida should look different than Vermont. The SAU is recommending using the following matrix for considering targeted or universal masking requirements. This metric was developed by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services as an option for districts to consider. This is directly from our call with Dr. Chan last week. They presented two different versions of this. I'm showing you the one that is less of requiring masks. So what this shows is the level of, of community transmission in cases within the school. So if we see sporadic cases without evidence of school-based transmission, masks are optional. Even if we have high case counts in Hillsborough County, right now, I don't know if you can see my cursor, we're at substantial. The entire state of New Hampshire in the last couple of weeks has gone completely red. Every single county has a case count of greater than 100 per 100,000. Now, where did the 100 come from? I didn't make the number up. This is coming from our public health officials. So we're already in this substantial column. So if you look where I'm, where my cursor is, we're in the substantial column. If we have a single cluster, that would be when I would recommend starting to use targeted masking if we need to. Last year, we had three total. So keep it in perspective. 3,500 kids over a lot of schools, we had three circumstances where I genuinely thought we needed to do everything we could to protect everyone's kid. If we have multiple clusters or a larger, or a larger outbreak, this is when the state is recommending universal masking of everybody. Now, what we have been told, and this is their words, not mine, this is a permissive, permissive recommendation. And if you want to look at, there's a new Department of Health and Human Services toolkit that was created for schools. I copied and pasted this directly out of the toolkit. So anyone who wants to see where I got it, go to the New Hampshire toolkit and you'll see exactly where I took this from. So let me continue to explain what I mean with this.
Dan, did you want to say something?
I did. And I didn't know, Brian, if you can explain, was there any pertinent information towards the asterisk in the cross on the words?
Yeah. They, they defined what they meant for those, Dan, and I'm sorry, good catch. I should have put the key down below indicating what that was for. My apologies. I don't want to be flipping back and forth from the plan, but I could, I could define that. Those are just their definitions. And again, it would be the, the state's definition.
All right, thank you.
So the following chart is an example of where masks may be required through a targeted masking model. Think about settings and locations and think about groupings. So again, we're not looking at everybody or nobody, but if we have cases in school-based transmission, this is what I'm talking about here, folks. I'm not saying that I'm going to arbitrarily look at buses or certain grade levels and start masking kids. I'm looking for evidence of school-based spread. If I see it, then we need to throw everything we have at it because we need to keep our kids and our community safe. If we don't see evidence of the spread, then I'm recommending we continue with masks being optional. So again, think settings, think locations, and think prescriptive use of masking if we have school-based spread and it's needed. So I'm going to stop there. That's the end of the masking section. I know that this, by the way, there's a whole lot of other things that are really important in this plan, not just masks. And I hope that people pay attention to all of it. But I would pause there and ask if board members have any questions about anything that I've presented specific to masks thus far.
No, everyone's good. Oh, go ahead, Jared.
Just looking at this, Brian, so you're going to be using case counts for the determination of this. We're not using hospitalizations or potential death counts?
Hospitalizations is something that I do look at. Somebody quoted the number 58. It's actually 63 when I looked this afternoon. That is something I do pay attention to. I look at the data. I look at the breakout by age. Everything that you have said is data that I have been looking at for a year and a half on a daily or a weekly basis. So there's a lot of information out there. I appreciate people looking at the statistics. But we, we would want to look at this, Jared. And the other thing I want to make sure people understand, when we have a cluster, we receive guidance and consultation from the Department of Health and Human Services. And I will say, I bet against them last year on their ability to conduct contact tracing. I knew that they were never going to have the capacity to do it. So this was a little bit of a calculated risk on our part. We trained our own team. We went through the Johns Hopkins contact tracing online class. We had all of our own contact tracing because I didn't think the state would have the capacity, which they didn't. They're not doing any contact tracing right now, and they do have capacity. So I would fully expect that if we have a cluster, that we will have a lot of support from our partners up at the Department of Health and Human Services. They were overworked. They were overburdened. They were understaffed. But when we needed them, they were exceptionally helpful. So when we had our three clusters that we had, we reached out to them. They did conference calls with us. We had doctors on the phone. We had their nurses as part of their team. They were exceptionally helpful. If we have a cluster or if we had an outbreak, we have also, and the guidance that schools have been provided from the Department of Health and Human Services have indicated that they will provide additional guidance if needed. I think that's likely what would happen. So if we had a situation where we had a cluster, the Department of Health and Human Services is going to give us guidance. That's what, that's what we experienced last year, and I would anticipate that that support will be even stronger this year because they're not doing all of the other contact tracing. The contact tracing that they're doing right now really is minimal. I, I don't know exactly what they're doing, but it's when they have some kind of a cluster, I do understand people are still being called, but for the most part, quarantine is only household contacts. So I think about all the kids that we quarantined, that we were told to do it by the public health officials. We didn't see spread. I didn't see it. I had one situation that I've continued to talk about over the last year and a half that we believe was a student-to-student, school-based transmission that occurred. It was the only one that we had all of last year.
Jared, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Go ahead, Jenny.
We've been talking a lot about mental health of, of students. And if we're going to have a choice of masks, could we send, and I don't, I don't know how to go about doing this or, or what would be the right way, but maybe could we send some information out to families? I know there's some families that are very pro, some families are very against. I'm afraid-
I haven't picked up on that.
Um, but I'm-
Thank you. Little bit of humor, folks.
I'm concerned about, you know, around the dinner table, there are conversations. And I, I'm concerned about the child that wears a mask and the child that doesn't make, wear a mask and bullying kinds of conversations so that children are uncomfortable. So I'm hoping that maybe parents will think about that twice and, and kind of make their conversations at the dinner table. You know, everybody has a choice and children need to, or students need to feel safe with their decisions and their family's decisions. And maybe for us to send something out along those lines, because I see the potential for some really uncomfortable students that either don't wear their masks anymore because people are saying, oh, what a baby, here you are with a mask, you know, what are you doing that for? Or other people saying, you know, you're not wearing a mask and you're going to be really unsafe. And so I'm just thinking that we need to do a little teaching to the students before they come back.
So Jenny, there is a section that I'll highlight when I get there, that I, I have captured that at this, as a school response. I didn't put anything about sending resources to parents about how to talk. So that I didn't focus on, but I did focus on that we need to make sure that we have a school culture and a school community that's inclusive of everybody. So whether a child chooses to wear a mask, parent wants their child to wear a mask, I want that child to feel safe. I want that child to feel like that's their, their right to do that. And they need to be free from any kind of harassment or bullying. I got to tell you right now, if I get any of that, we will put the hammer down. That will not be tolerated. That is not the kind of environment that we want to promote in Goffstown or New Boston. That's not acceptable.
Kids need to feel comfortable with their choice.
Yeah. And it's okay for people to disagree.
I know what kids are, I know what kids are like, so.
And it's fine for us to have different political beliefs or different ideological beliefs, but we should all say, at the end of the day, we're neighbors. We work, we live here, we're in the same community, we're raising families. I don't have any kind of an issue with these folks, except for that guy in the end with the beard. I'm, I'm not sure on him. But, but really, folks, I, I have seen this and in speaking with other superintendents, this is tearing communities apart.
Yes.
We're better than this.
Yes. Agreed.
So I'll continue if there are no other questions on masks.
Oh, wait, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yes, I, I, I do have one on mask. And if you could, Brian, could you pick one of the incidents of the three that occurred last year? And if that were to occur this year, what would be an example of a targeted approach? I'm trying to wrap my head around that. Like you have to wear a mask in class, but you don't have to wear it in a hallway? Or what, what does it really look like?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, that's a good question, Dan. I'll, I'll use the case at Bartlett. So we had a situation at Bartlett that we believe was, it started with infectious adult, and we had a couple of adults and a couple of students, I think three in total, it might have been four, that ended up being exposed and were positive. As a result, I put the school on remote learning for about eight or nine days. Maybe it was seven days, I think. It was about the end of a week and then the entire next week. I would strive not to do that this year. And instead of shutting the whole school down, a targeted mask approach might be, okay, first grade classroom, we had a positive case in your room. That group of students may need to wear masks for a few days to see if anyone's infectious. But this is going to be in tandem with a testing program that's a little further in my presentation that I haven't spoken to yet. But Dan, that might be an example that it was likely, it was based on safety and we wanted to make sure that we had all the cases contained. But that example, that school would not have needed to shut down. I would not have needed to exclude anyone except the positive student and anyone who needed to be on quarantine. But the whole school or the whole grade level didn't need to be excluded. We can be more precise. I'm, I'm trying to present something that is prescriptive and precise so that if- I'm trying to present something that is prescriptive and precise so that if we have a case or a cluster of cases in a classroom, in a grade, on a sports team, that that's what we're going to target, and everybody else, as long as there's no other cases, gets to go on like normal. So it's, I will say, again, I'm suggesting this as a targeted approach because I think that this is the right way to do it. And I think it will allow us to allow as much normalcy as we can for most of the kids almost all of the time. And if and when we start to see school-based spread, we're going to respond to it. It just, I'm not looking at this as a political position. I work very hard to keep my politics neutral. There will be those among you who think I lean right. There will be those among you who think I lean left, and you're all wrong and you're all right. So I strive to govern this school district from a impartial, politically-neutral position. And this is the approach that I'm taking because I think this is the prudent, responsible way to do it. And by the way, I think most New Hampshire school districts are going to end up here. They don't know it yet. And I haven't heard other school districts that are taking a similar approach, but my guess is the entire, most of the state of New Hampshire will probably have something similar that they try to use. Because, superintendents, we hear you, but we also hear the other side, folks. So I have been inundated, and I appreciate people taking the time to call me or send me emails, but I got to tell you, it's split. I get them on both sides. I understand. And I've tried to come up with something that I think allows us to retain as much normalcy, but to be precise and responsive if and when we have cases, because I don't want a child to get sick. I don't want a child to go home and infect someone who might be immune compromised or someone who can't get the vaccine. And it's important to remember, some adults cannot get this vaccine because of their own medical circumstances. Not everyone can get the vaccine. There are people that have allergy issues. There are people that have different kinds of immune issues. And again, I'm respectful of that, and I respect people's individual choices.
Jina, go.
So as a...
Oh, wait, sorry, Jina.
As a brief follow-up, Heather?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I can understand if someone walks into school, potentially, a student, and we say, okay, the class needs to be, but after a parent is notified that there has been this outbreak, would it not be prudent to allow the parents to dictate whether their child would wear a mask the following day?
I think a lot of it, Dan, is going to be taken out of our choice. Again, I think if we have, I'm talking about a cluster or an outbreak, I think that we will have guidance that we'll have to follow from DHHS. But your question may be a good one. It could be a notification, Dan. So again, thinking about masks optional, masks targeted, it could be masks recommended. So we could say, and by the way, we've been mask choice, people could make their own choices all summer, all summer. We had hundreds of kids in our extended school year program that attended in-person learning. We did not mandate or require masks from anyone. We did not have any spread. We had one positive case. We did not quarantine a single individual. We notified parents that their child had been exposed. I did not require them to wear masks. I let them choose what they wanted to do as a family. So I think, and again, we don't know what the numbers are going to look like. How much, how many cases are we going to see? How many incidences of school-based spread, et cetera? But as a tool to be able to respond if we have positive cases, that's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Are you all set, Dan? I think he's good.
I'm good.
All right, thanks, Dan. Go ahead, Jina.
That was my question, but I thought of a different one as well. Are we thinking about making these kind of, I don't want to use the word mandate, but these kind of, this kind of model for all illnesses or just COVID? Because I'm concerned about...
All of what?
All illnesses. So if some, if a kid gets sick...
The flu.
Tests negative for COVID, but he's got the flu, are we recommending that the whole class wear masks because we know that actually masks would be better?
This is specific to positive COVID cases. So if there's, and by the way, there are a lot of other infectious diseases. We could talk about pertussis. We could talk about a number of things that I've dealt with cases over my career where it's more than just COVID, but we're specifically only talking about COVID. So if there's plain old-fashioned influenza, I mean, you know...
Already in the school, no maths, necessary. You need to keep it...
Yeah, just for COVID.
Are you all set, Jina?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm continuing on. Cleaning and disinfecting. Schools will continue to be cleaned consistent with CDC recommendations. This is an example of something that I think we did last year, more than we probably needed to. It probably made people feel good, but the transmissibility on surfaces of COVID is very low. So the likelihood that we needed to be using as much sanitization as we did, I think that we've rethought some of that. Some of the recommendations are less than they used to be. And as we're sitting here, I added, oh, no, I didn't. I put it down below. Hold that thought. Additional cleaning will be used if we have positive cases. So again, think prescriptive. If I have a classroom with an infectious individual, I want to make sure that that area, that space has been cleaned, has been deep cleaned, has been sanitized. We're going to do that if we have any positive cases. But to go through that level of cleaning for every single classroom, every single day, was an incredible staffing hardship for us. Because, by the way, in addition to school bus drivers, it's really hard to find all school personnel, including custodians. Any and all PPE that we need to provide will be provided. So the district already has, we've gotten a lot of free PPE from the state that we're ready to use if we need to. Ventilation, mechanical ventilation will continue to be maximized in all of our schools. This is one of the absolute most important mitigation factors you can possibly consider. Air exchange and ventilation. We have mechanical air exchange systems in all of our schools that are operating on the highest percentage of air exchange in all of our classrooms. Each classroom's a little different, but we're exchanging all of the air within our classrooms as often as our system allows us to. Mechanical air exchange. Some school districts have older systems. We're lucky that we have mechanical air exchange, particularly in a school like Bartlett. As Mrs. Vermakowitz mentioned earlier, that is an older school, but we have active ventilation. Last year, despite the fact that I'm very cheap, we allowed windows to be open during the winter. I hated the idea of heating a room while I've got a window open, but for ventilation and appropriate air exchange, that is something that I will continue to support. So ventilation, I can't emphasize enough how important ventilation and air exchange is in the fight of this airborne virus. Distancing. You know that last year, we were recommended to have six feet of distancing. In our small, undersized, overcrowded elementary schools, this was an impossibility for us. So there is no mention of six feet anywhere in this plan. You will not hear me mention six feet anywhere because the only way I can do that would be to cohort kids and have some kids home and some kids at school, which I don't want to do. So we will strive for three feet of more of physical distancing. Easier to attain at the high school, three feet of distancing in classrooms will be no problem at the high school. Elementary classrooms are undersized and overcrowded. I have said this over and over. I have presented to this school board, the size of your classrooms, how much smaller they are than the state-required sizes. We have small, overcrowded classrooms at the elementary levels. Plexiglass barriers in place of physical distancing are no longer recommended by CDC and will be discontinued except by exception. So we will likely not have these up again. Again, I think this is another example of something that probably made people feel better, but the likely protection it provided was purely psychological. Contact tracing. SAU-19 will continue to follow all contact tracing directives. I do want to be clear, current contact tracing and quarantine is only out of the household. So if I'm positive, I go home, even though Mrs. Moran is in close proximity to me, she would not need to quarantine. The only people who would need to quarantine would be the people that live in my household. So that would be my wife and kids. Their friends wouldn't have to quarantine. Their coworkers wouldn't have to quarantine, just them. So it's a different model. But here's what I want to make sure the board understands. We have a group of well-trained, experienced contact tracers. I'm keeping them alive and in the queue here because I need the ability, if I have a positive case in one of the schools, I want to make sure that parents know it and anyone impacted is going to find out from us. I don't want you to wait and think, maybe the state's going to call you. I don't want you to think that maybe some parent's going to call you. I want to say, we believe your child was potentially exposed. And then, as a parent, you have a choice, or we may say, in working with DHHS, they feel that your child needs to quarantine. I think that's unlikely, but in the case of clusters or outbreaks, I expect them to come in and have more expectations around this. So we have our crew ready to go. The board knows. I can't begin to tell you how many thousands of hours we spent contact tracing. And again, we did this because this is what we were recommended to do by our public health officials. Did we need to isolate and quarantine all those kids? I don't think we did. I don't think we did. And as such, that's why I'm looking at something that is more targeted and more prescriptive than it was in the past.
Hang on one second, Brian, before you go on. Jenny had her hand up.
Brian, will families of other students in that classroom be notified if there's a student in their classroom?
Yes. And so, for example, when I use the example that we had a positive case this summer, we notified students who were, who would have been what we would consider close contacts. And by the way, the state quietly changed the contact, or the contact tracing timeline from 10 minutes to 15. So that has changed. Before, it was 10 minutes cumulative, so now it's 15. That was a change that the state made this summer. But that example that I had this summer, we notified the parents. We told them that we think your child may have been exposed. Please monitor them for symptoms. If you want your child to wear a mask or be tested, that's your prerogative. That's how we handled the case that we had this summer.
And would we do the testing here, or would they have to go to my office?
Ah, great question, Jenny. I like that you teed that one up for me. One of the things, again, that has been missing as a mitigation arrow in our quiver has been testing. We have not had access to testing. I was so envious of the University of New Hampshire last year for the testing program that they developed, that they did all of their own analytics. It was fantastic. So if you give me about five minutes, I'm going to, I'll be at the testing piece.
Okay, thank you.
Quarantine expectations, as I said, right now, and again, the recommendations could change, but it's unvaccinated household contacts. Fully vaccinated do not need to quarantine unless they are symptomatic or required to by DHHS, which, again, they can do. Them, not me. Absenteeism tracking and monitoring. Last year, we had a system where we tracked absenteeism on a daily and a weekly basis that allowed us to look for any possible trends of illness, trends of absenteeism in both students and staff. I will say, it was relatively unremarkable. There was nothing particularly insightful that I said, aha, I see a pattern in maple absenteeism in third grade, we need to do something. We never saw anything like that, but I think it's important for us to continue to monitor and track, do we have increases in absenteeism due to illness? That I want to know. And anecdotally, our nurses would say that it was probably the best year they ever had for school-based illness. The common cold, influenza, strep throat, you name it. They saw less of everything last year. A low bar, and again, I use that quote, that was DHHS's language, they're recommending a low bar on exclusion from school. So staff will be continued to notify us if they have a COVID-related absence. We will continue to work with our staff. Last year, our teachers and support staff did a remarkable job, and I couldn't be more grateful for everything they went through and continue to go through. Testing program. So there is a new program called Safer at School Screening, and we have met with a number of vendors, and we're able to implement a comprehensive COVID testing program that I wanted last year, but we couldn't do. So this year, we're able to do surveillance testing as well as what I'm calling targeted testing. So think about these different strategies in tandem. We have a positive case in a classroom. What's the first thing I want to do? I want to test everyone in the classroom with parent permission voluntarily, that parents can say, yeah, I want you to test my kid, and if my kid's positive, I want to know it. That will allow us to have a surveillance testing program for people who opt into it. I don't know what the response rate on this is going to be. I'm actually kind of curious. I have a number in my head that I think it's going to be about this percentage of people. I hope it's higher, but I think that this is something that I'm interested as an effective mitigation tool, but I don't know what level of participation we're going to receive. What will happen is there are a number of companies that have a contract with the state of New Hampshire as part of the Safer at School Screening Program. We're going to be able to choose a vendor, and they're all providing, excuse me, a similar service, but some of them have a little more specificity that I like. So for example, the surveillance testing could be testing a certain percentage of kids on a weekly basis. 5% of kids in a school, 10% of the kids, whatever it's going to be. The idea is you're doing surveillance testing, looking for positive cases. If you start to get positive cases, you can then look at more targeted testing. We've never had this ability to do it before. So last year, I had a cluster on the high school hockey team, and I wanted to test every kid on the hockey team to find out who's potentially asymptomatic positive that we don't know. These tests are incredibly expensive. We did not do this. We did not pay for this. This year, they will be free for us to be able to use this. And again, it's a parent choice. You don't want your kid tested? Don't have your kid tested. We're trying to give another tool for us to keep as much normalcy, as much in-person instruction, uninterrupted, looking as normal as possible, and testing is a new element to this. I've asked Mr. Gross to put together some recommendations based on the two vendors that we've already engaged with. We think that there are pros and cons, but our ability to do targeted testing, and here's the other piece that I want the board to know. Kid comes down to the nurse's office. Kid has a runny nose. That's a COVID symptom. The kid doesn't normally have a runny nose. The nurse says, that's rhinorrhea. That's a potential COVID system. I'd like to test that kid. We would now have the ability to do it. Parent doesn't need to come get the kid. Make an appointment. Go schedule it. Take them in. Does my insurance pay for it? Does the state pay for it? These PCR tests aren't cheap. What happens with the testing? We would have the ability to do the testing. I could say to a parent, we've got your kid down here. They're looking symptomatic. Would you like us to do a rapid test? We've never had the ability to do that before. We'll be able to do that as part of the Safer at School Screening Program.
Hang on, Brian, before you go on, I have a couple of hands up. Jared, go ahead.
As part of this, Brian, I know that you're saying this is voluntary, and that's great, but can you walk us through the actual process? I assume that this is going to be the school nurse or some other medical professional that would do it. But are we getting the results and then sending them to the parent? Or I'm just worried about HIPAA.
Yeah. Well, certainly confidentiality and privacy is always maintained in FERPA. So remember, the school district, when we receive medical records from a doctor's office or whatever parent gives it to us, we're governed by FERPA. These folks doing the testing would need to comply with HIPAA and FERPA in all likelihood. But so the way that this would work, Jared, is we would absolutely test, keep the confidentiality of kids, and in fact, the surveill, and I don't want to commit to this because we're not, we haven't chosen a vendor yet. We still need to look at this more. The surveillance testing doesn't even tell me who the kid is. I get a positive, and I learn that I have a positive kid in third grade. I may know the class, I may not. That then is what initiates a larger targeted testing to say, ooh, we had one kid, do we have more? So you have to, and so the first one may come back, I may not even know who the kid is. So some of those logistics, we haven't finished, and some of the different vendors are treating this differently. But think surveillance testing and then targeted testing as, again, another tool in our quiver.
If I may follow... If I may follow, Mr. Chair. So I guess my question is, are we notified of the individual or is this double-blind and the vendor would be reaching directly out to the parents to let them know what the results are?
Scott, do you, can you take that?
Sure. It depends upon the program that you're selecting. One of them is a pooled testing program where they're self-administered. Each child and/or staff member who voluntarily decides to do it, it is a non-invasive nasal type swab.
Bottom of the nose, not up high.
Right. So they just swab their nose, put it into a container that would be for that particular classroom or cohort. That particular container gets root tested. And from what the vendor said to us, one in 100 will be a positive, but so 99 out of 100 are negative. In that, in the instance in which it is a positive, the school gets a notification. Let's just say that there were 16 people that did the test. We don't know who was positive. All we know is that there was a positive in that group of, say, 16. Then from there, that's when the superintendent would then notify the classroom that we had one, at least one positive class, and then there'll be additional testing that would be voluntarily done of those particular students. The other, the other company, they do, they do an individual test. So it would be Jared Talbot is getting tested, and in that particular case, the school would get notified. It would be the school's job to let the parents of Jared know that we got yours back and it tested positively. So that's how, there's two different, they have two different ones. There is also the ability with one of the vendors where they provide what's called these rapid tests. Again, those have a higher incidence of false positives. But at least it's some sort of a tool. So in that particular case, as the superintendent mentioned, if a student comes down with, say, some, some symptoms, you could do a rapid test in 15 minutes. You would then allow, you'd be able to let the guardian or parent know, and you might want to have another PCR test, which is more accurate done on that student. So it all depends which, which route to go. For the most part, both of them are self-administered, but both companies provide nursing and a lot of support.
They, they provide the personnel.
They provide the personnel to get this program off the ground. And initially, it's a lot of, you know, teaching and training, but then after you get a few months into it, most of the kids, they get, they know their routine, they do it, and it's pretty simple.
My last follow-up on this, Mr. Chair. So I just want to understand, so we have multiple vendors that we're looking at. It's the recommendation that the superintendent is going to come with their recommendation for who we should actually be approving as the vendor? And then we would know the process?
I think that we would, yeah.
Yeah, Jared, we're, I, I would say, I wanted to put this in front of the board to see if the board had interest in the testing program before we got too much further down the road. Like I said, we met with two vendors. They were similar, 80% similar, but there were some important differences, that there were some features that we thought were, were good and important. Again, I don't know what the level of participation would be for parents. I personally would have really liked to have had this as a tool last year, and the fact that we now have it, and this is all funded by the state, this is all the federal COVID money that the state is put into this program. So there will be no cost to the Goffstown taxpayers as a result of this. So I, I think if the board is in support of the plan and the testing program is part of it, we will continue to meet with vendors and we'll have a recommendation. And, and Jared, we didn't get into the, that level of detail. It was more, tell us about what you do, because by the way, we were surprised, I thought that they'd be identical, they're not identical. And so for example, one of the vendors we met with, I said, I want the ability to test kids if they come down to the nurse's office and they're symptomatic. One of the vendors said, we don't do that. The other one said, no problem, we can do that. So we just have to really look at the features that we want. I want something that's close, I don't want something that's being shipped across the country. The labs are, are local, one was in Salem, the other one was...
Massachusetts is assumed to be one.
Yeah, right over the border. So I mean, the, I, I do think it's another tool that allows us to chase after positive cases and keep everyone as safe as we can. So I, I'm appreciative that there's funding for this. I'm appreciative that there are vendors that are going to come in and provide the nurses. Because if, if you said to me, great, Brian, go do that, you know, figure out how to have your nurses do all the testing. We're over, we're overtaxed as it is. So it's, again, I, I think that this is a nice program that we have access to that we didn't before.
Are you all set, Jared?
I have a comment, but I know there's other questions, I'll put them.
Okay, so I'll come back to you. So Ginny and Janelle had their hands up. Go ahead, Ginny.
I think it's amazing that we've been waiting for this since October of last year and it's finally come through, even though it was available to the schools. Anyway, now this information, the information about testing, positive or negative, that information wouldn't be sent anywhere for tracking or anything other than the school district using just to keep people safe?
No on the rapid test. So the state's requirement, if they're providing the rapid test, you have to provide the results to the state.
Only to the state, though? It wouldn't be anything?
Well, but we have to do that now. So I mean, if we've got a positive case, we have to contact them now. So I, I don't, well, again, that's why it's going to be important for us to look at the fine print. We need to make sure that we're not giving away any personal identifiable information about our kids. We need to make sure that they're, you know, these places have good, good confidentiality expectations among their employees. You know, if I see somebody walking out and they're chit-chatting and talking about this kid's positive or something, or they're throwing things with kids' names on them in the trash, that's not acceptable. You know, so we'll need to make sure that confidentiality and really preserving people's dignity, because if a kid is tested positive, that doesn't change anything. We're going to help the kid, we're going to help the family, we move on. I don't want anyone being ostracized or, again, we're, we're better than that as a community and we didn't have those issues last year and we need to continue to not have those issues this year.
And this is just another step of contact tracing really that we didn't have last year, would you say?
I, I would say the ability to test was something that we wanted desperately last year. Do you remember me talking on and on about the Department of Ed said there were 400,000 rapid tests that school districts were going to get? I got zero. Zero. I wanted this all year and now it's right here. So I want to jump on this.
And this would be important to keep kids in school and parents at work? This would be the main reason for, for having a testing thing, to make it easier for parents and not have to pay for the testing and run around to do it and keep kids healthy, to keep kids safe at school and not have to have outbreaks in, in closed school and make it difficult for everybody. So it wouldn't be something that necessarily was anything other than those, those kinds of, of reasons that we would be doing it, not to track anybody or do anything. And this, that would be the same thing at the state level also, similar to the...
The state wants to know, are we seeing increases in the positive number of cases? Are we seeing evidence of school-based spread? Are we seeing school-age kids that are transmitting the virus? That's what the state's looking for and we're looking for that same thing. We've talked a lot about that COVID is not as transmissible in children as it is in adults. The data supports that. So kids being masked optional, again, I'm comfortable with recommending that level of a masking program to start. I don't know what transmission's going to look like. I think we're going to get a really good look at it though, because all schools started in Florida on August 10th. And any districts that didn't start last week start this week. They will have three or four weeks of school in person with masks optional before we even start school. And I think if we start to see data that's showing schools are, are blowing up with positive cases in, in Florida or other parts of the world, other parts of the country, I think that that will be informative to us. We didn't, we haven't seen it yet. So, you know, yes, there have been positive cases. We had positive cases all last year. You know, we, we've, we've learned how to run schools and live with this. I don't want to close schools, I don't want to go remote, I don't want parents to have to make choices between staying home with their kids or going to their job. None of that's fair. So again, the testing program is just another tool at our discretion to be able to use to hopefully be able to keep kids as safe as we can.
You all set? Janelle, you had your hand up.
I have some...
You have to speak up just a little bit.
There's a fan over here, Janelle, it's hard to hear down here.
I have some concerns about the ostracization of our kids. If we're testing in schools and we're finding out, you know, classroom B has, you know, a case and everybody's sitting there looking at Jimmy and Jimmy's sneezing everywhere and everyone's like, well, Jimmy gave everybody COVID. I'm like so nervous about that happening and I know that we have a great community here. I know our kids are patient, our parents are patient, like, I'm so scared of that happening to our kids and this, and this idea of bullying over like, well, he gave us all COVID, now we're not going to be friends with them and, you know, I'm so nervous on how we're gonna, I'm curious on how we're going to protect our kids in that light. I know we can't protect our kids from everything, I understand that, I'm realistic, but how are we protecting these kids? And furthermore, if Jimmy tests positive and half the class says, well, I don't want to get tested, now they're wearing masks, now their kids who are not getting tested, are they being ostracized because they're not choosing to get tested and they want to wear a mask or not wear a mask? It's just, the questions, it makes me nervous going forward. I think the testing program is amazing in itself and I'm so excited that we have that ability in our schools. I'm just worried about long-term, are we thinking about how this is going to affect the culture of the school?
I think everything is impacting the culture of the school. And my experience over, have, again, hundreds of cases last year that involved kids, kids were great and supportive to one another. Parents, maybe not so much. Parents, not people here. These are, these are, these are good people. It's everybody, Janelle. So what I want is if we have a positive case in the classroom, the parents are notified, people knew what classroom it was, we knew that when kids were on quarantine, we knew that if a classroom was remote, whatever the circumstances, but we have to create a culture that we care about one another, we tolerate people of different mindset and different ideological beliefs, and we will not tolerate a culture where people are being picked on or bullied because they're going to wear a mask or not wear a mask, or I was exposed, now someone else is positive. We have to quarantine because of you. We, we won't have any of that. Last year, the kids were great, we had some problems with parents last year. And there's a new thing called, is it Facebook? Again, you know, we're all going to live through this thing together. I want to come out of this as a community stronger and tighter than we went into it. And I hope that we can continue to do that. So a little bit further, as I, I mentioned earlier, there is a focus on making sure that culturally, that we're being inclusive of people whether they choose to wear a mask or not. And we need to not be singling out kids for any reasons. It's hard to be a kid.
Are you good, Janelle?
Hard enough.
Hard enough as it is. Kids don't need to be picked on because of COVID or because they had to quarantine or because somebody was positive in their family. They're already being picked on for other reasons and we have extensive programs that we've done over the years to try to teach kids to be kind, to be good classmates, to be inclusive of an environment together, that they're in a culture. We want kids to be good human beings. And we need to make sure that parents model what we expect in our kids and we will continue to have expectations around protecting kids' dignity.
Hang on one second, Brian. I know Jared, you had your hand up again.
Yeah, just, just as a comment, you know, I have two things. The first one is, I was a professor, I am a professor at UNH. I've seen the testing program that goes on. As a professor, I've also had students that were not able to attend class because the administration knew about their status and there were administrative hurdles and burdens to overcome for those students to come back onto campus and into the classroom. So I know that that's an issue, but my, my more passionate comment is I am very fearful that the school district knows medical information from our students through a vendor. I would prefer if we pick a vendor, that is a direct contact from that vendor to our parents on what the status is of their children for these tests. I agree we should have the tests, I agree that we can, can have the ability to administrate them. I just want to ensure that the school district doesn't know who these students are and that the vendors are contacting the parents directly based on those tests and the results of them. That's my comment.
Thank you, Jared.
Well, but, but hang on. So if there's a positive kid and I don't know it, the next day that kid comes to school, kid's sitting next to your kid, kid's positive, kid should be home on quarantine, we have no idea. We just have to be mindful. I, again, I want to always respect people's privacy, I want to make sure that our kids' personal identifiable information, including my own kid, is safe and secure, but we can't, what are we doing? We're testing people for a global pandemic virus. So there, the examples that Scott gave, that pooled testing, I wouldn't know who it is. I would know it's a third grader. And then the targeted testing would be more third graders would get tested to look at, do we have an outbreak happening that we don't know about because the kids are asymptomatic? I, I would say, think about the testing program, we don't have all the details, we've met with two vendors, there were a couple of others that we haven't met with, we will get into the finer details, but because I wanted this last year and couldn't have it, I think I'd be crazy not to be recommending it this year, particularly when it's free.
Do you have a question? Ellen, did you have a question?
Just real quick, because it's going to go through.
Jared, are you good?
Couple times, Brian, you've mentioned getting guidance from, on Concorde, I guess, someplace.
If we have a cluster or an outbreak.
Last year, we heard, we'll get guidance and guidance never came on various things from Concorde. I would hope that we would, yourself and our district would continue to be proactive in what's best for us to be doing here and absolutely not waiting for anybody to tell us.
Ellen, it may, it may shock you, but I'm not a very timid man. So if I need to get information out of the state, I will hold them upside down and shake them by the feet if I need to.
I think a few of us would come help you. But just that, we've been through this with the state before and I don't want anybody thinking we're going to sit around and wait. We don't. Here in Goffstown, we don't.
And, and again, when we have called and said, we need guidance, they have been very helpful. If you're waiting for guidance and you think maybe they're going to call and give it to you, you're probably going to be disappointed. But if I call and say, I need one of the doctors to call me, they do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, continuing on?
Yeah, everybody good for now?
Cohorting. Cohorting is something that we did extensively last year to try to limit groups. We're still going to do some of this, it will be on a smaller scale. Some of it will coincide with arrival and dismissal. Interestingly, we noticed last year that we had things that we really liked by changing arrival and dismissal by different doors, different schools did it different ways. So some of that we're going to keep, that's kind of under that cohorting umbrella, but the premise being that if we had to restrict things, we would have the ability to do so. But some of it, again, is just some of the logistics of arrival and dismissal, so we will keep some of that cohorting at the school level. Outbreak management, again, we'll continue to work closely with DHHS and consistent with our community, our communications plan, we notified of every positive case we had last year and we put all the information on our website. Vaccines. Vaccines are an individual choice and some cannot receive the vaccine due to health reasons, even if they're old enough. I said that before, that's important to continue to emphasize. We will exclude no students based on vaccine status. We've, we've seen that in some other communities, that is reprehensible. Authorization is expected for children less than 12. So Pfizer has been going for approval for the less than 12 group, Moderna is as well. I would imagine within the next month or two, we're going to see vaccines down to age six. I also think we're going to see full authorization, not just emergency authorization of the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines. I'm not pushing anything else on... I'm not pushing anything else on vaccines here, people have different opinions. We offered vaccines to our staff, we did them on-site, we did three different clinics, two sessions each. We did our over 16-year-olds with a clinic and we did our over 12-year-olds. I do not, I want the board to hear me loud and clear, I do not plan on running a clinic for younger children. So if there is authorization that goes down to age six, I do not plan to offer a clinic on-site using our staff in conjunction with the fire department to vaccinate those children. I think younger kids should go to their pediatrician to be vaccinated. So that is something I do not plan to offer a vaccine clinic for younger kids. If, we partnered with the Manchester Public Health Department, they were great partners to us, and if we needed to do a booster or something, we're happy to work with them, but I don't plan to do a vaccine clinic for younger children. As it was with the over 12 population, we had a lot of kids that were scared and nervous and some kids are pretty spooky about needles and vaccines and I get that, and I don't want to do that with little kids.
Dan, did you have something? No? Okay. Go ahead.
So speaking of vaccines, and this is really important for me to share, the town of Goffstown's vaccine numbers, as published on the state's website, we believe are wrong. The town administrator, Derek Horn, and our fire chief, Brian Allard, have worked very, very closely, but we believe that approximately 1,250 homes in Penardville in the 03102 zip code may have been attributed to Manchester. We have seen this in other things. 03102 is a Manchester address, I don't have to tell anyone from Penardville about the zip code problems, they all know it, and it has real consequences sometimes when people have called 911 and the 911 operators are sending a Manchester ambulance. There's a lot to this, but I do want people to hear me, that I've had a number of parents reach out to me and say, Brian, the percentage of vaccinated people in Goffstown is less than 40%. That's true, according to the state's website. We believe that approximately 3,500 residents up to may not have been counted in Goffstown's number. So I'm not doing anything else with this. Derek has done a great job working with our state senator to try to get the numbers reviewed, to get the people who compiled the numbers to look at this. We saw the same thing early in the pandemic, that Bartlet cases were attributed to Manchester because of the zip code. So we've seen this, we've had this before. And I would add, in terms of vaccines, St. Anselm College, which was problematic to me last year, is looking considerably better. They're reporting that they're at 93% vaccination rate for St. Az. That's terrific because all those kids are in our community. They're going down to pizza market, they're going to the drugstore, they're at the grocery store. So the fact that those college kids are vaccinated, great, I think that helps everybody involved. But I do want the community to know that there is a fair amount of concern about the published numbers that impact Penardville. And I don't have an answer. We've been chasing after this. Mr. Horn has done an incredible job, as has Chief Allard, to try to get answers, but right now, I pose it to you and say, it is a factor, it is a consideration. Goffstown looks like they lag behind the state as a whole, but we think that the data's inconclusive and there are errors. Disabilities and other healthcare needs. The SAU in the district will continue to provide reasonable accommodations for modifications, for assistance for students and staff with disabilities and other healthcare needs, as we have all along. Teaching and learning. Remote learning will not be offered. I want to make sure people understand this. Last year, we were required to offer remote learning and the numbers kind of worked for us because we had a population of kids that chose to be fully remote. We basically think about the math, however many kids we needed, we took that many teachers and assigned them as remote teachers. We don't have staffing in the capacity to be able to offer fully 100% in-person instruction as well as remote. So I know that this is something that some parents are disappointed, they've expressed frustration to me that we weren't able to do this. Think about the ability to offer a full complement of high school classes and all the teachers that you would need to be able to do that remotely. I'm glad that we were able to pull it off last year, I thought our teachers that taught remotely did a nice job, it was not easy to do, but this year, we will not be offering remote instruction. Social emotional learning. Continued implementation of social emotional learning and providing additional counseling supports to students as needed. And then Ginny, this is the one right here, and I think this goes to what Janelle was asking as well. Schools will create a culture that is supportive and inclusive of anyone who chooses to wear a mask when it is not required. I will not tolerate kids being picked on because they're choosing to wear a mask. I would expect that every parent, if the board approves the plan, that chooses to not send their kid with a mask, will have the respect to honor the people who want their kids to wear a mask. And that you'll tell your kids, it's fine, it's fine, your friend's wearing a mask. The doctor, when we go to the doctor's office, wears a mask. Do you remember when we went on the airplane? The pilot was wearing a mask. People wear masks, it's fine. And I don't want anyone picked on or ostracized because of that choice.
Or not wearing a mask.
Or not wearing.
Or not.
Or not.
Exactly.
Post-pandemic recovery stage. I had really hoped that we would be post-pandemic. As it turns out, that was an optimistic thought of mine, and as we continue to focus on this year, these are the things that I have been telling the board we needed to focus on. Unfinished learning, particularly in mathematics. We've seen national data as well as local data that shows our math kids, math scores went down. Kids need more help, they need more instruction. Remediation and enrichment. We will offer tutoring to anyone who wants it, no cost to parents. Every school has a tutoring program that we will implement this year, we offered free tutoring last year as well. So any parents who want that, that will continue to be an option for you, and I want to do more with enrichment. So if you have kids that are below-level learners or have skill deficits, great, makes sense, we want to help them where they're struggling. But we have kids that are gifted and talented, we have kids that are advanced-level learners, those kids need to continue to be challenged as well. And social emotional learning, I do want to be clear, this is our, the curriculum, the second-step curriculum that we've used for many, many years. We need to teach people how to be inclusive and be part of a community, and a school community is important.
Hang on a second, Brian. Go ahead, Janelle.
For the remediation and the unfinished learning.
Speak up, please.
Yes, sorry. Nobody in my real life ever asked me to speak up.
Use your mom voice.
For the remediation and sort of relearning efforts, I know we got a pretty extensive presentation last year on sort of what plans were for next year, some of the plans that they were working on through the summer to get kids back to where they need to be. And this is another huge, huge, huge concern of mine with kids losing so much this year and other kids excelling so much. So there was this huge divide within classes that's happening where some kids did awesome doing completely remote and they excelled, and then we've got other kids, and I know that that's no different than any other year really, but yet it is, it's a different, it's a different gap. There's some kids who did zero all year round and I'm just, we're pushing kids on to the next grade and just saying, we'll catch them up, and I'm really concerned that we might be biting off a little bit too much than we can chew. And where?
We may be, but it's still the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
And in terms of kids that did absolutely nothing, we did have a few of those, the numbers were very, very low. I will tell you that we chased after every kid that wasn't engaging, we worked with parents, parents threw their hands up and said, what do you want me to do? It was a real challenge for a lot of these kids last year. But you're right, we need to make sure that we continue to focus on unfinished learning, remediation, and enrichment. And kids need time. It takes time to learn mathematics. And if you think about some of the instructional approaches that we use, when we teach concepts like math, we provide direct instruction and then we provide support for kids to practice skills. That could be in small groups, it could be teacher-directed, a lot of that was impacted by being partially remote last year, or if we had kids that were, when we were still doing hybrid, that weren't in school for certain weeks, we need to circle back, teachers need to reteach, they need time. Teachers know if kids are getting it or not, and they need the instructional flexibility of their administrators to say, you noticed that the kids had a big skill gap here, I'm glad you slowed down, you went back and re-taught. That's exactly what we want them to be doing. We're not the kind of school district that we're walking around saying, you're supposed to be on page 47, you're on 45, you've got to pick it up. We don't do that. So kids are going to have unfinished learning that they need to focus on, for sure.
Are we looking at more of like, I mean, this has been my goal, being like special educators, I feel like everybody needs an individualized education plan because kids learn so different and, you know, that's been my like, whatever, my dream of the future. And we're heading there, surprisingly, we are heading there, but is that sort of what we're looking at for our kids?
We're looking at targeted remediation for kids that have skill deficits. So using programs, the board has heard us talk about things like iXL, we have the ability to say, we've noticed that fractions look like you've got some holes, we need to circle back and make sure we're reteaching some of those kinds of skills. And they need time, and teachers need flexibility to make sure that they can adapt their pacing as they need to based on what the kids are presenting with.
Just a follow-up, are we looking at, I know that it's not our practice and nor has it really been anyone's practice recently to hold kids back or push kids ahead of their grade level depending on sort of where they're at.
We do both. We don't do either of them with any frequency. So we do retain kids and we do advance kids' grades. I would say, in general, ideologically, I'm not a supporter of retaining kids. The research and the data is really not very positive, you're just making it more likely that kids are getting closer to dropping out of high school. So we have tried really hard to focus on if there are kids that are completely disengaged with school, part of the focus that you've heard me talk about this year, thinking about things like the dean of remediation, is to look at more alternative programs, more options for kids that struggle in school, more options for kids that are behind grade level. That's what we need to continue to do. Unfortunately, some of the programs, the people who need it choose not to access them. So some of the tutoring models, there are kids that we would, we're encouraging, we think your kid's below grade level, we think your kid's behind, we'd really like to see you take advantage of this free tutoring program, and families don't. That's their choice. We brought it to them, we told you, we showed you the data, if you choose not to do that, that's your choice. But we're going to make it available to people throughout next year. I can't give any recommendation beyond next year, hopefully we won't need to, but who knows where we'll be a year from now to even think about that.
Are you all set, Janelle?
Yep, thanks, Brian.
Okay. Go ahead, Shane.
So Brian, are we going to be using like a multi-tiered system?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know a lot of districts are doing that right now because there are so many kids at so many levels where, which we've all seen an uptick in special referrals, but we use that kind of system where we catch them before we get to that.
Yeah, and remember, from a belief perspective, if you're behind in math, you don't need to have an IEP to get help. We want to help you, you're our kid. You don't have to be labeled as this or that, we're just going to give you the help.
Very good.
Seems kind of crazy, but that's what we do, Brian, that's what we do.
Thank you.
Field trips. Field trips, we did not allow any field trips last year. I'm recommending that field trip requests can be made to me and let me evaluate them on a case-by-case basis, but again, I want as much normalcy as we can, and if the first graders want to go pick apples, let's go pick apples. Athletics. We will continue to follow the guidelines from the NHI AA as it pertains to best practices. At this time, we would continue to have our recommendation be masks optional. Outdoors, I did not, last year, we did not require anyone attending games to wear masks outside, we changed in the spring to reflect that. However, again, go back to the bus, based on what I've been told and pending our legal review, they will be required to wear masks on the buses if they ride the bus to an event. We'll continue to monitor conditions in the community, and here's another thing, and our member schools. So our athletic director, Mr. Huff, if we have games with Merrimack, he's talking to the Merrimack AD and the Merrimack AD may say, geez, we've had a whole bunch of cases we want you to be aware of, you know, the ADs are talking, they're making sure that if we're going into a situation that they've had cases that we know about it. We don't know who, but we may know that they had, you know, positive cases on their team and we need to make sure that everybody knows and we're all being careful.
Oh, sorry, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, are we allowing opposing spectators to come?
Yes. Yep, we did all year. Some schools, yes, I'll just leave it there. And for fall athletics, the only indoor fall sport is volleyball. Everything is outdoors. So I heard people talk about, how come you can be at Fenway Park and have 40,000 people in the stands? Well, don't forget, they're outdoors. So our venues for all of our athletics for fall are all outside with the exception of We will, so in terms of bus driver shortage, it rears its head significantly in athletics because we have been told and we have informed middle school parents, there are not drivers to do middle school athletics transportation. It's not that we don't want to, it's not that we're not willing to pay for it, the drivers don't exist to pull it off. So the middle school will again be impacted. I hope that this doesn't make a situation that kids aren't able to play because families can't get them to and from, we've been flexible about families, you know, kind of sharing, carpooling and some of those things. But we have a policy, EEAG and EEBC, that requires kids to ride the bus. We are recommending that be waived for this school year, which is what we did last year as well. Middle school is slightly different than high school, the middle school is governed by the tri-county athletics league, which is more regional, and high school athletics is guided by the NHI AA, which is statewide. But we will continue to follow the tri-county guidelines, which mirror the NHI AA guidelines. I already mentioned the busing. Performing arts, Mrs. McKinnon talked about the wonderful play that the performing arts department did this summer, that was a mask optional event, we didn't require masks of kids or people coming to the event, we would anticipate a similar approach, but we also want to be pragmatic. We know that singing is more dangerous than just talking. We know that some instruments put out more respiratory droplets than other instruments. There is specific guidance around performing arts. UNH was a great resource to us last year, they served as a resource to Mrs. McKinnon and the performing arts department for some of the guidance that they had put in place. But we will continue to evaluate things like chorus. Chorus is probably the biggest one. So do you want, we have a huge chorus here and a remarkable chorus, as it were. If I've got 65 kids, do I want to put them in an 800-square-foot classroom and have them all singing? I don't. We need to be smart about it. Maybe they're singing outdoors, maybe they're singing in a larger space, not a regular classroom. So we will continue to make those kinds of decisions based on the guidance and based on what we're seeing. Requirements for hygiene and respiratory etiquette. You have to directly teach kids what you want them to do. Parents know this. We think that they know this stuff, but they don't. They need to be reminded. So we'll make sure that we continue to teach kids and remind kids about hand sanitizing, about hand washing, about covering their mouth when they're coughing, using tissues, all of that, I'm not leaving any of it to chance, all of that needs to be directly taught to kids. And by the way, high school kids, despite having the intellectual ability to know better, not Caleb Hagner, he's gifted, we love him. not Caleb Hagner, he's gifted, we love him. Other high school kids also need to be reminded of these things. Cover your mouth, get a tissue, go wash your hands.
Eat your vegetables.
Eat your vegetables. Thank you, Janelle.
Get some exercise.
So we will, we will continue to do that with all of our kids. That's the end of the plan. Some of the logistics, as I've already said, will be determined at the school level. I did want the board to know last year, we made some minor alterations of our school day to try to accommodate busing and arrival and dismissal. I have changed all of those times back to pre-pandemic school times, so you'll see that. It was small, it was only a couple of minutes here or there, but as someone who believes in a longer school day, in a longer school year, I want as much time with these kids as I can get. And so if it's a few extra minutes, I'm taking it. We're putting the times back to what they were pre-pandemic.
Thank you, Brian. So, yep, Ellen and Jared, who had?
Okay. Based on this presentation?
Yep.
I think I have four motions. Two of them are about policies based on what was requested here. One, I want to ask the board to consider the mask optional for buses, and the fourth one to accept this recommendation from the superintendent on how to open our schools and what we're going to be doing. Does that make sense to people? Okay, the first policy one was, I move...
Well, before you start motioning the policies, let me give everybody a chance to ask questions, and then we can start making motions and decisions.
And if I may, Madam Chair, Ellen, I think that if you're talking about EEAB and EEBC, I think that they're included in the plan.
And so is K.
Yeah, my, and KF. So the policies that I referenced, I think if you accept the plan, the policy implications are inherently within the plan.
Okay, no problem.
So Jared, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just as a question, because it's not outlined anywhere in here, and we're going to be in class all the time. What is the thought process of school days? And would we be using remote learning for school days? Because that is not in our plan.
School days?
I'm sorry, it's snow days.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put it in the plan, Jared. And this is something, again, being a superintendent, sometimes you make people happy, sometimes you make people unhappy. People are on both sides of this one. My recommendation is if we have inclement weather, that we would have remote learning days.
Okay, so it's...
I didn't include it in the plan.
Yeah, even though it says that we would be in school all the time, the thought process or exception would be we would have remote learning only for notified snow days.
For a snow day, if there's an ice storm, something of that nature. Jared, actually, what I thought I would do was to bring a recommendation to both boards as its own standalone. And I got to tell you, as somebody who loves winter, I think that we can have a balance in, well, we could talk more about it when we get there, but I think that snow days are hard on families. It's hard for people to take days off of work. It's hard to have their kids, you know, people may be trying to work from home, their kids are unstructured, they're not doing anything. So there are pros and cons, but my recommendation at a later point will be that if we have inclement weather days, that we would shift to remote days on those days. The alternative is, we just make the days up at the end of the year, which is what we've done my entire career. And if we do that, okay. I've had some people say that he's going to call more snow days. I'm going to disappoint people because I am not of the school of thought that life is without risk. You live in New Hampshire, it snows in New Hampshire. We're going to have dozens and dozens of days where the roads are not free of snow. I worry about young drivers, and I've told parents, if you have a sixteen-year-old that you're worried about driving to school because there's snow, don't let him drive. You're the parent. I remember the first time my new driver's son, when he was a junior here, we had a day that I did not call a snow day, but there was snow, I don't remember what the circumstances were, and I wouldn't let him drive. Guess what? There's lots of stuff I'm not going to let you do. That's a parent choice. I will continue to treat snow days the same way I always have. I get up at the crack of dawn, I've already looked at the weather for three days, I go out and drive the roads. I live in New Boston where there are lots of hills and lots of dirt roads. Anything I drive on is worse than what's here. So anyhow, I digress a little bit about snow days, but more to come on that.
So Terry has his hand up. Jared, were you?
I'm good to go.
Good, okay. Go ahead, Terry. He texted me, that's how I know he has his hand.
I was like, wow. You're good.
Go ahead, Terry.
I had a text, I wasn't sure how else to do that virtually.
That worked well.
First, Brian, I think the idea of the plan is fantastic. If we can do regulated fashion and through an approved DHHS model, you and I had talked about this months ago in the diagnostic field, and no value of this to the school district and how. And just second comment of the CDC thing, just so, it's not a matter of promotional, it's more around the publication, and I think CDC is on the fact that the school district receives public dollars, and that's what they're leveraging as the reason for the mandate.
For the buses, you mean, Terry, right?
I think, I think he's likely right. So one of the things that we often hear about is if you don't follow federal law, that you risk federal funding. I don't know if that's true or not. We get, we get quite a bit of money. We get IDEA money. We don't get the full forty percent that the feds promised back in nineteen seventy-five, but we get a portion of it. I would not want to risk our money, but again, you're going to get a legal opinion on that, so we'll evaluate that further.
Thank you, Terry.
Right, and that's what should be the question is around that, because I know some other school districts have other legal opinions around it.
Yeah, and I have a colleague superintendent who I think already has a legal opinion on this one, so I'll see if I can get some of that information as well.
Anyone else? Ellen, go ahead.
To my knowledge, what the CDC recommends is not law.
They're recommendations.
They're recommendations, they're not law, so.
They're not mandates, they're recommendations.
No, it's an order, it's public transit order, that's what we need to, we need to look at.
Public transit order.
And I'm just, I'm trying to provide some insight on what we need to...
I know, it's hard to hear. Thank you, Terry. So the plan as is minusing buses with masks, was we're going to wait to find out what legally we're allowed to do or not do, and we can know that at our next board meeting, August thirtieth, correct?
I would think that we would have a legal opinion by the thirtieth, sure.
Like email the attorney or whatever.
Okay.
Mr. Gross is very efficient.
That's... School starts the next day.
Yeah, so how...
But unless we do an emergency meeting between now and then, that would be the only way we would be able to meet again and make a, and vote on it.
Do you have the ability to school messenger?
Yeah, we, I could notify people if we just, if it comes back that the board chooses to not follow this order, we can notify people, not a problem.
And then the other thing was testing to have more information, and that is planned for the next meeting as well?
I think what I'd like to recommend for testing is, if the board is supportive of the premise of testing, let us keep working with the vendors, and we'll have a recommendation for engaging in a contract. And again, we haven't gotten this far, so I just want to be really clear, we haven't reviewed contracts, we haven't gotten into details. We just wanted to know, what can you do for us? What are the services you provide? Who's going to do it? And I think that we're getting pretty close. And again, this is all predicated on participation. So if, if we do a survey and I find out that a low percentage of people want to do this, it may not be worth it. In which case, my recommendation is, geez, I'd really love to have a testing program, but I'm not going to go through all this work if, you know, twenty-five percent of people are going to participate in it. It's not worth it for me. And again, people have strong opinions on a lot of things. Testing will be one of them. People will have strong opinions about testing.
Anyone else? Ellen, do you have your hand up?
Should I make a motion that the board support the premise of pursuing the idea of testing availability and go back to the board?
Yeah, that would be part of the plan.
I don't think...
That is part of the plan too?
Yeah, I think, Ellen, I don't think you need a separate motion like that. I think if the board is in support of the plan or anything you'd like to change, if you're in support of the plan, I would say the components within the plan, such as the testing program, would also be pursued.
But then make sure that we say buses, masks on buses is not decided yet, because that's going to be decided once we have more information.
A motion to accept?
Uh, hang on one second. Dan, did you have something?
Yep, before Ellen made her motion, I want to make sure that she incorporates inside the motion the item that we're going for legal opinion, masking on the buses.
Right.
Yep, we said that.
Thank you, Dan. Jenny?
This is probably not going to make me the most popular person, but as a pediatric nurse, sometimes these things are hard for me to ignore. I think this plan can work and be safe for people if we have community buy-in on it. I think the testing is important, I think the contact tracing is important. I think it's okay for people to make a choice of masks or not masks if those conversations are going on, that everybody is feeling comfortable at school with them, so, you know, a little bit of the divisiveness is gone, and kids are knowing when they come to school, it's okay. I think the testing is really important so that maybe we have some buy-in on that for people to feel comfortable that this is an important part, and it's not being done to check on people and go against their rights at all. But to keep their children safe, I've seen a lot of really sick kids, and it's really not fun. And just kids that are sick can't come to school. And a lot of kids that can't come to school, you know, makes it hard for kids to learn. So I think these steps that are in this plan is something to get our kids back to school, get them back on track as far as their academic studies go, but also to work on their mental health. But if this plan isn't followed by, you know, this group and our people that have been nice enough to come in and give us their views, if they don't kind of like work with us, then this is really not going to be all that successful in keeping schools open and kids in school to get the best academic experience that they can have.
We need the support of our parents, we need the support of all of our community.
And I'm not saying that to be sermonizing or anything, it's just part of the plan, you know, to, everybody works together to make this work and to keep kids safe. And if that's how it will work, then I'll feel more comfortable with it.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else before Ellen is going to do a motion in a minute? Everybody is good? All right, go ahead, Ellen.
I move that the board support the proposed reopening, sort of called reopening plan.
I would call it what it says on the top of the document.
That we support the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, SAU nineteen COVID emergency operations plan, temporary regulations to policy EBCF pandemic epidemic emergencies. Okay? That we support that with the understanding that the mask requirement on buses is, remains undecided at this point, at this time.
Correct.
Is that thorough enough? And it covers all the other things? Okay.
Do I have a second?
Janelle's seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. So we have, Janelle is a second, we have a motion, Jared.
Question, is this acceptance plan replacing EBCF dash R, which was the plan that was implemented for return to school? So I just want to make sure that this is actually a replacement of EBCF dash R for our policies, if that is accurate.
R is a regulation, so you...
I'm looking at it right now, it says SAU nineteen emergency operations plan COVID nineteen dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty, and our policy's out on the SAU website. EBCF dash R. So it's, this references, the motion you made?
Yep.
References EBCF?
Yes.
There's also a dash R, which was the reopening plan that we instituted back on March fifteenth, twenty twenty. And I didn't know if this is replacing that, and that's what I need for clarification.
So should I say, change my, okay, thank you. Instead of policy EBCF, please add dash R, which is its regulation.
Thank you, Ellen, thank you, Jared. So, Janelle, do you second that amendment? All right, so we've had a lot of discussion, I have a motion, is there any other discussion before I take real call? Okay, see and none? Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous, motion passed.
I have a request.
Yes, go ahead.
I totally agree with the notion that the community needs to support these efforts. I personally have, in public, here, right here in Goffstown, seen adults mask-shaming other adults. It makes me furious, actually, both to wear one or to not wear one or whatever. I'm wondering if it would be helpful if we speak with our select board and ask if they, at their meeting, request support from the public, and if not for this plan, for the general community to work together to help all of us in this community as we face the oncoming school year and more people are together and closer, that the adults in our entire community, not just parents, work at that community support and tolerance and acceptance and all that. I don't know if that would be helpful, but I don't see that it would be hurting anything, because we're talking about a whole community, not just our school community.
Right.
So that's a request I have, I don't know if, how the board feels.
Does anybody have any opinion on that? Thoughts?
It's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot.
Yeah.
Talk to Derek. Scott?
Yeah, I'd be happy to have Mr. Gross do that.
You can also go to select speaker.
I've been there. Been there. If it's on their agenda, I will show up.
I think, Scott, if we just send the sentiment that, again, as we're embarking upon another challenging school year, Ellen's sentiment is, it takes a whole community. And we appreciate the support from the town. I, again, will continue to thank the select board members, we have great relationships with the library, DPW, police, fire, town hall, waterworks, sewer, I mean, we have great relationships, they work really closely with us. But again, the idea that it takes everybody is a good one, because it does.
It does. So thank you, Brian, and all our administrators. That was a very huge, thorough presentation. Thank you, board members.
Lot of work.
So we'll get more information at our next meeting, August thirtieth. So now that we're done with that, let's get on with our regular agenda. You all are welcome to stay or you can leave if you want. Thank you again for coming out tonight.
Do you want to stay for the two hours?
We could be here until eleven o'clock, you're more than welcome to hang.
May I ask the chair?
Oh, yes, oh, you're, um, public comments. If you make public comments, if you have your papers, you can hand them to me or email Denise. Just, yeah, I can take yours back. Thank you, thank you. You're welcome, have a good night.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Thank you.
That's fine, you can email Denise who wants, she's on the SAU website. Thank you so much, thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Heather?
Yes.
May I make a request that under committee reports, if I... May I make a request that under committee reports, we have I CIP?
We have what?
I CIP.
Oh, yes. Thank you. All right, so finance report. Oh, Jared?
Before we continue, I'd like to invite our student rep back to the table, please.
Yeah, that would be fine. Thank you.
When does the teacher rep come?
Well, usually our reps start once school starts, so that's why we didn't set a table up. We just didn't expect you tonight.
I understand.
I'm glad you're here, so thank you.
Thanks. That's awesome of you.
All right. Everybody good? We ready to move on? Okay, Scott, finance report.
All right. Tonight, you have a manifest summary, and what I did is I aggregated both the latter part of June and all of July onto this summary. However, it will be, I contacted Dan this afternoon, there are two different manifests simply because of the crossover of six school years. So for the end of June, the manifest totals $917,551.50. And then for the month of July, the manifest totals $3,718,914. So with that, as you can see, there was just a ton of financial activity in the latter part of June and all of July. I don't know if you want me to kind of go through, go through all the, given the time and all.
Look, if there's anything big-
But I will tell you that July is one of our busier accounts payable months because we are paying a lot of annual payments that are made in that month of July, most notably, I wanted to highlight a couple. So on that first one, Wells Fargo, it was a little over $638,000. So that one is notable because that was, one of those is your bond payment, and that's the last bond payment that you're making on this 20-year bond.
Wow.
So you will not see that. So that's kind of like ripping off the board.
That's awesome.
So that's a good, all right. And then there was a couple of Apple leases in there as well. The other one, you had your trustees of the trust funds, your CRF deposit. The next one was Pinnacle Public Finance, 167,302. And that's another one where we rip up the mortgage. So that was a five-year lease on Portables, and we won't have that in this year's budget as well. Primex, I'm going to talk a little bit about that one. It was a little over $85,000, and we got a notice from Primex that we got a little bit of, it's a premium holiday or credit on our property liability insurance.
Awesome.
Across the board, all of Primex's member districts and towns got a good savings this particular year, so that's also pretty notable. And let me see, what else? I think everything else was kind of more or less self-explanated. Then I'm looking. I'm going to cover some of these things that I talked about some of the summer. You worked out this number. Are there any questions that were on that manifest summary sheet? So I would need, even though you've given me authority to sign off on these and to issue the payments at your last, the last school board meeting, it does, it would be helpful to have a motion to affirm the manifest. And I'll repeat the number and then perhaps someone could just say-
It's not this number?
No, it won't. So because it's two different, it's two different ones.
I do have a question.
I'm sorry.
I do have a question on the sped. What is it we district out to Bedford for $76,000?
Those are out of district. It's like an out-of-district place.
They have a program that's run by the New England Center for Children, highly specialized autism supports.
And the Dorans bus. Okay, thank you.
All right. So the first manifest that would need reaffirmation or approval would be for the dates of June 21st through June 28th totaling $917,551.50.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. So we have Ellen and Jared. Any discussion before I do roll call? Okay, see and none. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry? Terry? All right, I think we lost Terry. Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed. Go ahead.
He's still showing us on the line to see.
Yeah, and he's not texting, so.
Okay. The second manifest that would need reaffirmation and approval would be for the month of July 2021, and that is in the amount of $3,718,914.
Even?
Even.
So moved.
All right. So we have a motion by Ellen. We have a second by Shane. Any other discussion? Okay, Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry? Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed.
And the next order of business was expenditure and revenue reports. And Heather Kelly, who works in my office, business office, she has been sending those to you. Again, we don't always cover the expenditure and revenue reports, but we do get them every month, and I'll cover those down the road, maybe in September, October. We'll go through those if you have any questions. But we did, we did build out the revenue budget, so we'll see how we're tracking there. If you do have any questions, you can always call me. And that's all I have.
Any other questions for Scott before we move on? All right. So the next is budget committee report with Jared?
The next scheduled meeting that is on the calendar at this point in time is September 21st at 7:00 PM.
All right, perfect. Thank you. P and C committee report, it's Reda, but she has nothing to report. Was, do you know, I know you guys were going back. Do we know when we're meeting?
We'll meet in the fall.
Okay, so that's to be determined.
I don't know if we set a date, but we will.
All right. Stipend committee. Ginny?
The stipend committee has not met, and I expect after school starts, we will start setting meetings up.
Okay, perfect. Policy and review committee has not met, but we do have a meeting set for September 20th at 2021, 5:30 at the SAU building. C and E, Ginny, that's you.
C and E has not met either, and we have a meeting September 20th at 7:00 PM at the SAU.
All right, perfect. Facilities planning committee. Jared?
So facilities planning committee was planning on meeting on September 21st. However, it was the will of the group that we do not meet again until the demographic study comes back, because that would be more actionable intel for the individuals to talk about and make decisions. So we are postponing it until such time. We receive demographic study sometime probably in October. However, there is a question that I would like the board for consideration. This board authorized the use of the demographic study to be conducted. My question is, do we want to see that first as part of this board, or do you want the facilities planning committee or the, yes, the committee, look at that information first? My recommendation is, we have charged that group to do this work, therefore we should just punt it to them. However, you know, we are the arbitrators, and do we want to see the information first?
But that's what the subcommittees to do and then come to us.
True, but I don't want to take it out of our hands and put it in their hands. I want to have a collective discussion.
Does anybody have a strong opinion either way?
I do.
Yeah, I heard you, Dan. Go ahead.
I'd say whenever the report comes in, send it off to whichever group is meeting next. If it's us, I would like to get it. Even if we don't discuss it much, if we have the numbers, I would like to see it.
Okay, but-
That's my opinion.
Well, I could see that, that it would be sent to the board to look at, but Jared-
Yeah, but no matter what, the subcommittee should really go through a thorough job of it and then report out to us, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't see it before then.
Yeah, that makes sense. Is that everybody good with that? I agree with that.
Yeah.
Great. So whenever we get that back, we will set up the next meeting for the facilities planning committee, and we'll go from there.
Do you have any idea when?
He said late September, perhaps early October.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you, Jared. All right. SAU-19 joint area subcommittee, we met in July. We went over everything that we discussed. They had, New Boston has a meeting Wednesday, that they will go into non-public and discuss what we told them. If you want to know more details, we can go into non-public later. So we have another meeting set up for August 24th to see what they discuss Wednesday, and then we'll get more information after that. So we meet August 24th at the SAU at 6:00 PM. And then, yes, did you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I was going to add is, I think we accidentally omitted superintendent's report from this section of the agenda.
Oh, yeah, we did.
So I do have a number of things to share.
All right. So I'll do that after I. So CIP is Ellen.
Yes. CIP has been meeting through the spring and all through the summer. We have concluded our piece of it. Our administration has always did an excellent presentation and helped everyone at the table understand the revenues coming in and the offsetting part of that. It went very well, very smoothly. And we are, I have it down, that we are meeting with the planning board to do our CIP presentation, and I'm doing the school side, which will be very brief, 7:00 on September 23rd, Thursday.
Are you back to meeting in person?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep. So that's that night, and each of us took on a section. It'd be a very brief statement to, general statement with regard to what's in the CIP, and then it's in the planning board. CIP is a subgroup of the plan.
Right, perfect. Thank you, Ellen. All right, are we missing any subcommittees? Yes, Janelle?
I just got a question about A and F. When are we planning on meeting again?
Speak up, please.
Oh, A and F?
I can't.
When is A and F planning on meeting again, if at all?
One of the issues is Dan is remote for the time being, so.
Can you remotely call in to those meetings or no?
Could do that.
So we should talk and decide if we can start doing A and F?
Yeah, one of the things that we didn't really get a chance to, I'm not talking to Brian about this, I'm not speaking at school here, that I chatted with Brian about was perhaps the notion of doing, me doing financials once a month. And so rather than every school board meeting, I'd have an A and F meeting once a month and do all those types of things with you guys. So that was something that-
And how does Dan feel about that? How does Dan feel about this?
Dan?
I haven't chatted with him about doing a remote meeting at all.
Yeah, I, we can meet once a month. Just for giggles, I have another meeting on Wednesday at the Dartmouth, and I'm going to find out how close I am to coming back, but we'll see.
All right. Now we can go from there.
And Scott and I talk during the month anyway, so we can continue to go through. And don't forget, if we wanted to meet in the parking lot, I could go with my mask on.
Yeah, that's true.
I'll work with the three of you.
So more to come. Thanks, Janelle.
Thank you.
All right. Any other subcommittees we're forgetting before we go on superintendent report? Go ahead, Janelle.
Sorry, I have one more question.
That's okay.
About the negotiations contract, the contract negotiations committee, when are we starting? Have we got any dates for that?
Waiting for Kate, right, to set that up?
Yeah, we haven't set any dates yet, but we did, I believe. So we've got a couple of different contracts going. We have had preliminary conversations with them, but not with the full group yet. So we just need to get some dates scheduled.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Janelle. All right, superintendent's report.
Thank you, and I apologize that we missed this on the agenda, but I do have a number of things that I thought the board would be interested in. I wanted to let you know that the Italy trip that had been, being planned, has been canceled. So unfortunately, the trip isn't going to be able to proceed. There's not enough interest. We were partnering with Pinkerton for this trip, and it's been canceled, so just wanted to let you know. There is a need for a special election in Goffstown, and so Scott and I and Mrs. Moran have spoken with town hall. They would likely need to use Bartlett and the high school for a polling location. I expressed my hope that we might be able to do that on a Saturday. I think it is by statute. Mr. Kudier can give us a little more on this, but I believe it has to be on a Tuesday. In speaking with Kathy Ball and Derek Horn, so at this point, I don't know what they're looking to do. The board knows that I am not in support of having school when an election is occurring. I think turnout will be low, so this might be something for us to give a thought to. This is for an open house seat, so I don't know that we would have thousands and thousands of people coming to vote, but it will impact us. So I wanted you to know that that's being discussed and it's in the queue.
Thanks. Dan, did you want to add something to that?
Oh, no. It's going to be a Tuesday. I'll guarantee that. The only difference is, if there's more than one individual in either party who signs up, then it'll both be a primary and a general. And if there's only one person in a party, then the primary would be skipped.
Yeah. So it could even be two elections. Good point, Dan. So again, we'll have to see what the options are there. I would hate the idea of taking the day off of school. I would also hate the idea of doing a remote day for the high school in Bartlett because of elections. There's just a lot of bad choices on this one.
Because we have a day in October off, could we do it on a day that we already have?
This is, unfortunately, this is all-
Oh, it's a Friday. Oh, it's a Tuesday.
It's statutory.
Yeah, okay.
So it has to be on, so one of the, one of the options that the select board is considering is having, again, as Dan mentioned, if there are more than one person who wants to be on the ballot, so if there is a primary, that means that the election itself, they're looking at a December 20 some, it's like, it's during school vacation.
Okay.
And then based upon the statute, you have to go back a certain number of days, and it would put it, you know, on a Tuesday. I forgot what it was.
Somewhere.
Literally, I mean, the day after or two days after, we already have a time off, so, but it's all mandated. It's not like we can, you know.
Right. We don't have a choice. All right.
Yeah, so I just, yeah, I just wanted this on the board's radar, so you knew this was happening. At the end of the school year, the Department of Ed did something called 603 Bright Horizons survey, and they combined it with a special education survey that we do every year called Indicator 8 Parent Survey. Those two surveys were combined, and we were just notified that our data is available. So I have assigned this task to Dr. Dolof to go in and pull our data and for us to start looking at it. Most of it is that special ed Indicator 8 survey data, but we'll have some more information forthcoming once we start to review that. The bog road development is happening. That is going forward, 74 units, so we wanted you to know that this is moving into the building phase. Mr. Gross is going to give a short list of some of the summer projects that we did this summer. And Scott, can you also give an update on the Sistern, the Mountain View Middle School Sistern?
All right. So just a couple of, we did quite a few little things. We replaced the four that the portable classroom at Bartlett. We did some tree work at Bartlett as well. And we're in the process of trying to get a fence installed around the playground equipment and trying to build a little berm, because we're losing a lot of that material and there's some safety issues there. We replaced the roof on, so remember we had those torrential rains, so this one was not planned, but we had these really bad rains, and the roof at Maple Avenue, the portable, we really had, so we had to do that. We had significant cracking at Mountain View Middle School, the playground area where the basketball hoops are. So while we, we had to do this, it's called a mill and fill, and while we did that, we did replace the basketball hoops there, and it's going to get all reseal coated. But the, after those rains, it was like at least three to four inch, like, yeah.
Crevasse.
Yeah, crevasse. It was pretty crazy. There's painting going on at Mountain View Middle School as well, hallway, and I believe a gym. We re-tiled one of the floors, the classroom floor at Mountain View. And if you go into the guidance office here, the carpet was like really bad, and we did replace that with, it's almost like a laminate type- and we did replace that with, it's almost like a laminate type, rubber, red laminate flooring. The roof for the softball building was replaced as well. And Brian, I don't even know if I told you this one, but our vaporizers bit the dust here, the propane vaporizer. So, those, those are in the process of getting done.
Good, because they, those never worked correctly.
And because of that, we then had to use oil. We had to switch over to oil.
When it was cold, when it was really cold.
The bad part is that we had this in our budget for next year, but we had to do it. So, I think, we'll see how the year, we have some other favorable news later on, but if we have to do a budget transfer, because we don't have money in the, in the repair line, then we'll have to do that. But it was one of these things where, like, if your hot water heater went, you had to repair the hot water heater, and we thought we'd get a year out of it, but that was almost 30 grand. We did replace, or we're in the process of replacing the concrete stairs here at the, the theater, and also some external, there's some external stairs, concrete that needs getting done. And over at the SAU building, you'll see too that we started that long construction for the security piece. So, that was pretty much that, you know, a lot of, a lot of like little, small, probably nothing massive, but just a lot of little things.
And the cistern?
Then on the cistern, look boy. So... Yeah, thanks, Brian. So, if you'll recall, last year, we talked about we had to get the cistern at Mountain View inspected. It's been there for over, over 30 years. And initially, we thought that we would be able to drain the tank and so, and have to deal with that, do it twice, actually. But we were able to use a robot. But, long story short, we had budgeted $80,000 for this project, and it's going to bar, it's going to almost double that. So, we're looking at, you know, probably $155,000 on the top end. The work's going to get done next week. We've got a pretty, pretty tight window. But basically, what happens is it has to get drained. Fire department's been really actively involved in it. We have to have the fire department on standby because, while they're doing it, because two people go into a very confined space, and there's OSHA requirements, and they scrape the, the cistern, and then they, they reapply an epoxy type finish. But we've got to also have temporary water on site. And, you know, Randy, Randy gave me a top end of about $155,000. So, and it's still going to come out of the capital reserve fund, but it was a heck of a lot more money than, than, than what we anticipated. So, the work is going to start next week, and it is a super tight timeline. I mean, so we open school on 8/31. This work will be done on 8/30. So, Randy is well aware, fire department, we're all well aware. Grassmere Water Precinct is where everyone has got every contingency in terms of spare parts, you name it. So, we ought to keep our fingers crossed that we run into nothing that, you know, goes, goes totally south there. But one of the things that was a hiccup for us was we couldn't do certain things because we had, we had summer school in that building. We couldn't tinker with this, because we weren't allowed to, to tinker with that while, while school was in session. And there are leaking, I'm trying to think of, Brian, what's the term? Where that comes out of the, the cistern, where they attaches to like the pump, it's leaking. So, it won't, if we had to turn the pumps on, we're afraid that it might blow out, you know, the whole system. So, this piping that has to get replaced as well. And that's where the fire department says, you cannot wait till next summer. You've got to do this thing now, and that's kind of the gist of this one. So, it's rapid news, but it's just with this. So, that'll hopefully, we got to pray that this thing is all square, by the time school starts.
Go ahead, Jared.
So, the cistern and the rear stairs was coming out of the CRF. Is the rest coming out of just ongoing maintenance lines? For those projects, all those projects that you listed?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All of those come out of repair lines that we have.
But not the cistern project, Scott?
The cistern and the rear stairs, I believe, were approved for CRF funds.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so what, you know, I'm going to talk with, I talked with Randy already about this. And because this project, if it does end up being doubled, he thinks that's our worst scenario. But it's a very possible worst scenario. We may want to rethink, you know, we had the heating controls that we talked about. We may want to revisit that one. We already put it off as it is. And that one is ESER eligible, so we might want to think about just doing that project using ESER grant funds versus CRF. But more to follow once we know what, how this thing goes down.
Egan. Ellen, go ahead.
Just quickly, you touched upon it, Scott. Using this much more out of CRF definitely will impact how we were planning on using CRF and ESER funds going down. Can we, once you have the numbers, see how that ripple effect is going to impact this?
And that's why, I mean, it kind of dovetails with what Ellen talked about with CIP. So, CIP moved some things around. We had put some things in 2023. They moved them into 2022. And one of the directives was, please put this in your budget or do these projects to try to stay true to, to, to the CIP. So, with that, that's why I'm looking at potentially doing a couple of those projects using CRF money to try to satisfy what CIP wants, and then using ESER money for a heating control, which I know we can't do, so...
Did you change something?
Huh?
CIP changed something?
Oh, yeah, you did. You did like two or three things.
Yeah, Scott, that was actually the next thing on my list.
Okay.
I just wanted to highlight that it looked like they moved some things around for priority years.
They moved them ahead.
So, Ellen, I wanted to make sure that you knew that.
I was at the meeting.
And Scott, maybe you can share the document with Ellen if she didn't get it?
It should be in your...
Yeah, I got it, I got it. I got this one. I got the one from CIP. I was at the meeting. I don't remember those changes as pertains to... Okay, I'll just accept what you're saying and...
So, I'll continue, if I may, just real quickly. We have some good news regarding health insurance. Health Trust has notified us. Board members will remember that in the past, Health Trust has amassed a fair amount of money and then done reimbursements to school districts, so we're getting another one. I would call this a nice problem to have. We're looking at approximately $350,000 that we're going to be getting from them this year that we did not anticipate. So, that's a good thing. It's bad that they're over collecting money and then hoarding it into a fund that they then need to reimburse, but...
It's insurance, Brian.
Be that as it may.
Right, if you don't get the claims, then that's... I'm just trying to defend the industry.
Yeah, I know. I wanted to let the board know that one of the things that Mr. Gross and I are recommending is to have a public hearing on our ESER funds. We are required to get public input. We are not required to have a public hearing, but to Scott, Denise and I, we thought it made a lot of sense. That evening of the 13th, which is your only board meeting in the month of September, we are already planning on doing a hearing on receiving a gift, a class donation from a, I don't know what's...
Class of 2020 donated about $8,800 to the school.
So, class of 2020. So, that evening on the 13th, we're going to do two public hearings. The receiving the gift one will be short, but the, the ESER one, I would like to, and Scott and I already talked about this a little bit, but we want to go through and talk about some of our plans. And I do want to just let the public know, anyone who'd like to give any input on use of ESER funds, that we will have a public hearing on 9/13. So, I wanted you to know that that was in the process.
Question, Brian, sorry for interrupting.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Just, I know that the facilities planning committee, that was part of the strategy that they're using to review some of this. So, should we be inviting the facilities planning committee to that review of your strategy of how to use ESER funds?
Or maybe we could just give them a summary.
It's bold. So, we, we believe that it would be prudent for us, we already know that we have our facilities planning committee, and we have already included them in. So, my plan is to do that with them separately, and then this will be another layer of public input and involvement.
Okay.
Continuing on, I wanted to let you know, we had a lot of conversation about foreign exchange students. This year, we have filled all six seats that you approved. I wasn't really sure if they were all going to come, but oh, boy, they're, they're either here or they're coming. So, we've got six students. Three are Goffstown students, three are New Boston students. Two are from Spain, one is from Mongolia, one is from South Korea, one is from Norway, and one is from Sweden.
Cool.
So, it's a pretty diverse...
Yeah, that's good.
You know, a lot, a lot of, a lot of Europeans, but I was glad to see a couple of the other ones. I wanted to let you know that Mr. Gross sent a letter to our local childcare centers letting them know that our busing will be impacted this year. In the past, we've been very generous about busing to after-school programs and daycares, and we're not going to have that level of availability this coming year. So, we did put them on notice. I wanted to let the board know that we made a decision on the learning management system. We will be moving forward with the Schoology platform. And in the end, Schoology had a number of features that Canvas simply couldn't replicate, including things like standards-based report cards that we're looking to do for elementary and middle school students. And Schoology is owned and operated by Power School. So, all of the integrations with Power School are absolutely seamless. And there were a couple of elements that we thought Schoology was a better platform than Canvas and have moved forward with that. And lastly, I wanted the board to know that over the summer, I had two different requests on right-to-know requests looking at critical race theory. So, I wanted the board to know that those were processed. And as I shared, we are not teaching critical race theory. So, I again wanted to affirm that to the board and to let you know that we had a couple of right-to-know requests pertaining to that. And that's all I have. Thank you for adding that in.
All right, so we're moving on to old business. The only thing we have, we need to approve our school year board meeting schedule. We saw it at the retreat, so you have a copy of it. Everybody's good with what is in front of you?
Move to approve.
So, I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second by Janelle? Any further discussion? Okay, Jared, go ahead.
Just, because looking at it, we're looking at budget presentations. Was there discussion to do joint budget presentations? I can't recall if we did that or not.
We did talk about it, but we don't...
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember.
Because I did speak with Joe, and Joe, and Joe Alexander, and the budget committee themselves also agreed to do that together.
Okay, so we'll do one presentation for both at the same time?
Well, there'll be, right, there'll be two presentations, one, right, yeah.
But not us and then them?
Correct.
Right, okay. All right, anything else before I do roll call? All right, Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Oka Doki.
Terry? Nope, he's not though, but he's there. Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So, we can post this now on the SAU website. All right, there is no new business, right?
Nope.
Good, all right, so board authorization request. Are we doing, what was that?
Staffing?
That's after.
Oh, okay.
Where, the next one is board authorization request, where we do board motion. So, I'll read it unless someone wants to change anything. We need, a board motion is needed to grant continuing authorization to the superintendent under the superintendent's emergency operations plan for COVID-19 as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF pandemic epidemic emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designee authorization to respond at his or her discretion to changing public health circumstances, and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting.
So, move.
Uh, wait, Jared, did you have a...
Just as a question, because what I'm trying to understand is, EBCF is a policy that we already have in place.
Right.
So, what are we doing by...
Right now, that's why I was asking about this motion.
So, I, I toyed with the idea of embedding something into the plan to just give the ability to have the flexibility to respond if circumstances warrant it. I didn't do that. I thought that your preference might be to have it as a standalone entity. You could also do this once until rescinded and not have to keep doing this at every meeting, but I didn't want to assume anything for the board.
Well, I, I guess my question is, because EBCF is never going to go away. That is a policy that we have unless we change it for pandemic circumstances. So, is this really using EBCF-r in allowing that action and implementation plan of R to be used for a temporary basis?
It's definitely the R. I, I would agree with that, Jared. The R, the regulation, and again, this is just the way we did this, but it made sense for me, because we were dealing with a pandemic, to tie it to the pandemic policy. So, that, that was a decision that I made, you know, in March of 20.
And we're still going to be dealing with it, at least for a little bit longer.
Yeah, and, and again...
So, I should amend the, the motion to be EBCF-r.
I, I think that would be appropriate. Dan, I think, was trying to also jump in as well, but...
I had the same thought.
Yeah, EBCF is, is part of the policy package. It's not going to go away. And before, we were using it based on governor's...
Right.
Executive authorization, which is no longer present. So, is this just going to be a, you know, EBCF-r that we would use for reauthorization?
If, if, if I may, if you read the motion, it says as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF. So, we are actually allowing him to modify the regulation, because it says temporary regulation to the policy. So, we're spending the current policy or whatever. So, it's already in the motion.
So, we don't need to amend it to dash R, because it says regulation?
Right. I think it's worded correctly.
Okay, all right.
Oh, so, I just want to make sure, so, so, Dan or whomever wants to answer. So, this is truly saying, because we're saying the term temporary regulation, that is referencing EBCF-r?
Yeah, the dash R is the regulation to the policy. You can't have an EBCF-r without the EBCF, because EBCF authorizes the dash R.
Okay, no, that's, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Dan.
Yes, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Do we want it to the next successful school board meeting or until rescinded?
I like the school board meeting.
Okay, so we'll just keep it. All right, so I need a motion.
I made it.
All right, so Ellen and Ginny, second. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry? Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Yeah.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Next is a board motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting.
So, move.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ginny. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry? Nope. Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. So, now we're into school staffing.
Okay, we have a rather large list, as we often do this time of the year. I would just highlight a couple of things. I have an administrator nomination for the dean of remediation of Michael McMurray. So, I couldn't be more pleased to have Mike in that role. Teacher resident?
Go ahead, Dan, you got something?
Yeah, can, can you explain to me what a remediation dean is again?
I can pull up the job description and read it to you.
Is this a new position?
This is a new position. This is a position that I brought to the board in May or June. As a general summary, this new administrative position will focus on remediation enrichment for students post-pandemic. This position will provide direct and indirect evidence-based supports and services to at-risk students and their families. The dean will work directly with students and families who have been, have been identified as needing additional supports, but currently are not receiving additional support, such as special education or 504. The dean will oversee supplemental tutoring service as well as additional counseling services during the FY '22 school year. And it kind of goes on from there, talking about alternative programming and providing additional supports. But this was essentially looking at additional supports for at-risk kids that weren't tied to special ed or 504, Dan.
Right, and I think if I remember correctly, it's grant-funded for a year?
Yes, yeah, this is grant-funded for a year, using ESER funds.
Yes, that's, I remember now. Thank you.
And I would say, including... And I would say, including other duties as assigned by the superintendent, so there will be a number of other things. Hypothetically, maybe a testing program for COVID. There could be other things that might somehow fall within that administrator's responsibilities. But we have resignations, nominations, as well as student support specialists and co-curriculars.
All right. And we need motions for all of them. So why don't we do?
You could approve the whole staffing sheet as presented.
Yeah. Does that work for everybody to, once we go through it?
Well, just for giggles, Michael McMurray is a district position?
Yes.
Shouldn't that be the SAU board?
Separate from teachers?
No. It's a Goffstown position, Dan.
But it's going to work for the district?
Only, yeah, but only Goffstown. So this position won't be doing anything at New Boston Central School.
Okay. So it'll be a 000?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And by 000, he means district, budget, location.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the way the brain works.
Yeah. All right. So go on through.
Okay. So just quickly, administrator nomination, Mike McMurray. Teacher resignation, Sandy Fife, Suzanne.
Tebow.
Tebow, thank you. Diana Thomas. Teacher nominations, Kristen Brown, Tina.
Lamachia.
Lamachia. Who wants to read the names? Anybody but me. So teachers as presented. Teacher change in assignment. Christina Lamson is moving into our technology integration specialist. We're thrilled to have Christina move into that new role. She's a very, very talented teacher and educator, and I couldn't be more thrilled to have her in that role. Student support specialist resignation of a tutor for Connor Hager. Student support special nomination for a tutor of Seal Pareta. Seal Pareta may look like a familiar name. She retired a couple of years ago and is still working part-time. So we've been happy to keep Mrs. Pareta. Co-curricular nominations, we have a couple of new ones. I'll just highlight the new ones. All the rest are existing coaches or co-curricular advisors. Football's a big program. Bill Pompa is a new football coach. And then we have a couple of new football coach volunteers. Nick Mokwin, who's a former student at the high school, great kid, great family. So glad to see Nick volunteering in the program. We have a new fall spirit coach, Marissa Sharrest. You may recall that last year, we had a lot of difficulty finding a spirit coach. So we're glad to have her. Welcome aboard. Nick D'Agostino, new girls' varsity soccer coach, and tryouts started today. Field hockey JV, Colleen Dubois is new, and Josh Amboroso is new as a volleyball coach. Matt Urb, JV volleyball coach, and Marissa McLaughlin, new freshman girls' coach. So it's a whole new coaching staff for the girls' volleyball program. And Emma Sobolov is the middle school field hockey coach. We have that as new, but Emma has coached other sports before. She's a special ed teacher at Bartlett. And that's the list.
So go ahead, Jared.
Just looking at teacher resignations, for the biology teacher in particular, I know that that's always been a difficult position. That's been expressed. Do, how we?
Not well. Biology is exceptionally hard for us to find. We have been processing, we are looking at providing additional classes to existing teachers to cover the teaching load, because we have not been able to find a suitable biology teacher.
Is the expectation that this will be backfilled?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, we're not going to have, we're not going to be able to run some of those sections. So we're looking to have additional, teachers pick up an additional section, which they would be paid for, which we've pretty routinely done when we've needed to. I worry about teachers burning out, teachers taking on too much. But at the same time, I'm incredibly appreciative that they're willing to do this.
Great.
All of the sciences have been exceptionally challenging to fill. Physics, chemistry, bio. The maths have been very hard to fill as well. We've had a lot of challenges this year in hiring, and a couple of them aren't finished. So we've had a couple of teachers that have resigned, but I have not let them out of their contracts, because we don't have a replacement for them. So I do want the board to know that. Puts us in a bad place. It puts the employee in a bad place. It puts the new school district that they want to go work in in a bad place. But we also have, we have, so we have two outgoing that I have not let out of their contract, and we have two incoming that two other school districts haven't let out of their contract. So I've got four total, two going out, two coming in, and nobody's going anywhere, because nobody can hire anything. We're trying.
So I saw Ginny's hand up before Ellen's. Jared, were you set?
Good to go.
Okay. Go ahead, Ginny.
So are most of our positions filled at this point?
They are. I wish I would have had Kate put together a list of what vacancies were. The bio one, we have, we received a proposal, and I think they had enough interest in teachers to pick up extra sections. So I think that was the last one that we were hoping for. And then the two, the two employees that, again, there are four, two leaving, two coming in, that, two that we're trying to replace, but we're working with the other school districts impacted.
Speaking of teacher burnout, this is just a question. The teachers that are taking on extra classes, is that policy in their contract still that they have to do duties?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Yeah. They're basically giving up like a prep period in order to pick up an additional class. And we're lucky that we're getting great teachers that know the curriculum to be able to teach it. But we don't like to do this as a standard practice. But we did with all the woodshop classes, we were not able to hire a teacher, so we have, which is what we did last year, we have additional teachers picking up sections, and this biology. And I can't remember if there were any other departments that we were doing it. I think it's just the two.
History.
Was there one in history, Scott?
Yeah. We did it in history as well.
I'm not remembering that one.
Maybe at a next meeting, we can have a little update.
Yeah, maybe if we can.
Ginny, you set?
Yeah.
Ellen?
Yes, Brian, are any of these people who are leaving, leaving for better salaries?
Yes. Yes.
And that, they're, all of them, they're leaving because there's a district that's paying them more?
Well, so you've got, you've got three resignations here.
Right.
Sandy Fife moved to Florida, so Sandy is, left the region. Diana Thomas retired. I don't know about Suzanne, but I will tell you, we had one, we had one teacher from Mountain View that left us to go to Milford for a higher salary. We routinely have people tell us that part of the reason that they're leaving is due to salary. That's.
So I just had a quick question before we do a motion. So Mrs. Fife, do you, I don't see anybody replacing her. I know she's a seventh grade teen teacher. Do you have someone to, or sixth grade, I don't remember what grade.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll bring an update on where we're at with hiring.
That could affect a team.
I think, I think Mrs. Fife, who by the way, exceptional teacher, very sad, very sad to see her go, but happy for her. Mrs. Fife was a known entity, so I think Mrs. Kohler might have already taken care of that one.
Okay. Well, because that can impact a whole team of that grade.
It can impact a whole team. And we didn't list it on here, but one of the ones that I have not let out of the contract is also a middle school teacher.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions before we just do a motion to accept the school staffing?
Did I make that motion?
Yeah, go for it, Ellen.
Oh.
Yep, I think we're good.
I moved to accept the staffing as suggested, recommended on the list.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? By Shane, any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Terry? In case it comes back?
Nope.
Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Did you hear Dan?
Yes, I did hear you, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Shane, yes. And Heather, yes. So motion passed.
Do we have?
All right. So.
We do.
Any other business that may legally come before the meeting?
I think I have a question.
Yes?
You want to tell them to accept the plan, and then you changed it, she changed it to the EBCF-r, where it already said regulation from the policy. Are we going to keep that motion, or do you want to?
We took the R off.
No, we put the R on.
No, we put the R on.
Yeah, and then we just.
Even though it said regulation of that policy. Same thing as what you just did.
For the board authorization. So in the presentation, it says regulation of EBCF.
Right.
So your original motion probably should have stayed.
I thought we switched it.
Right. That's what Denise is saying, because now it's not consistent with the board authorization, which we don't have the R, because it was in the sentence of regulation.
The way you said it, temporary regulation to policy EBCF.
Right.
So you already said it. Let me change it to EBCF-r.
Okay.
So we should have just left it the first one?
Should have left it first.
Right.
Okay.
So do we want to?
Which piece? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
The regulation.
We changed it to R, but we don't need the R.
So the acceptance of the plan is a replacement of R?
But it's already in the plan to, it says regulation.
So just to accept the plan, period?
Right. We didn't need to do, right.
And we voted on with the R in it. Okay.
Because it says, where is it on here?
The first line, around top.
So how is it going to read in our policies?
Oh, I see.
It's going to have the R.
It's going to have the R.
It's going to have the R.
And so we have an R, and we're basically deleting everything that's in the R right now, and replacing it with what was presented. That was a motion that I thought we had voted on and approved earlier.
Right. But then Denise is saying, when we did the board authorization, you asked to add the R, but then it's in the motion as a regulation to, like what Dan was explaining.
It's just inconsistent between the last motion.
So it's just.
The one we made earlier.
So we're just trying to be consistent across the board with the EBCF policy. So in the presentation, it says regulation to policy EBCF, which encompasses EBCF and EBCF-r.
No, EBCF is something completely different.
It's the policy.
Dan, do you want to chime in?
If I may, technically, there is no regulation to EBCF-r. It doesn't exist. And we don't want to create one.
What's the problem? I don't understand. EBCF is the policy.
Right.
So what's the question?
So the question is.
It's lit.
When we did the authorization, we just said the temporary regulation to policy EBCF.
Right.
But when we approved this plan.
Right.
We changed it to temporary regulation to policy EBCF-r. So it's just inconsistent with how we did that last authorization, and to how we authorized this one.
So what are you asking? What's somebody asking?
So Denise is asking if we should redo that motion. So it's.
They're going to tell me to remove what you said, R.
Right.
How do I look up the implementation plan in our policies for SAU 19 for what this regulation is? What policy number do I go to?
EBCF.
EBCF.
Nope. According to SAU, there's an EBCF, and then an EBCF-r.
They're not two policies.
They are two separate documents currently listed out on our SAU 19 website.
One's the policy, one's the regulation.
Right.
This plan should be that new regulation.
The regulation, the new regulation. Yes, that's correct.
To policy?
EBCF.
EBCF.
Right.
Right.
So you're asking if the authorization should include the R?
I.
Go ahead, Dan.
No, no, no. If I may?
Yes, Dan, go ahead.
I'm thinking of making a motion to modify the earlier motion for the first sentence not to be EBCF-r, but EBCF. It's an administrative correction to our earlier statement motion. Does that make it somewhat more clear?
No.
I think I get it. I just don't know if EBCF and EBCF-r are two different things.
Right.
That's.
Well, you can't have R without the first one.
Right.
They're not both policies. One's a regulation of the policy.
R is the regulation of the policy.
So when we approved the plan, we approved it as?
To policy EBCF-r, yeah.
Yes.
But did that motion?
And policy EBCF-r does not exist.
It's not a policy, it's a regulation.
It's a regulation.
Right.
Did that motion?
I think we're fine. I think we're overthinking this.
Okay.
All right. So we're good.
Did both motions include the statement, temporary regulations?
Yes.
Both did?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
We're good. I think it's fine.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Because we do have some non-public.
We do.
We don't have K, unless people want to go in under K, which is the joint area. Yes?
I just, I don't want Ellen getting, I checked the CIP, nothing got moved. I just checked every line. I thought it digs up so many things in 2022, I didn't want to think if we were losing tomorrow.
Well, I think that all the time, but.
But I wanted to, like a record, you are correct.
All right. So is there any other business that may legally come before the meeting?
Please?
We're good? All right. So we do have non-public. We have to go under A and C. K, we put on in case anybody wanted to talk about the joint area agreement. Does anybody want to talk about that?
I would like a recap of where we ended up, if that's okay.
We can do that in public without saying anything.
Well, we already kind of did. They got to talk to New Boston.
Exactly. We presented, we presented what the board had indicated to the other, and they took it away, and will get back to us. Does that kind of summarize it?
Yes.
And in fact, I'll add a little more, Dan. New Boston is meeting on Wednesday, and they plan on reviewing this as a full board in non-public. So you should anticipate more to come.
And then we'll get an update at our next joint area on the 24th.
Yep.
That was easy.
Right? Okay. All right. So I'm going to need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-a semi-colling 32A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and, two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case that request shall be granted.
I'll move that. You can't do both at the same time, A and C?
I can, we have to come out of A to go into C.
We do? Okay. So I'll move A.
All right.
Second.
By Shane. All right. Do roll call. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we are in non-public. We need to give GTV a few weeks to break down.
Yep. Yep. Why don't we take a?